Good afternoon. I'm having too much fun in here, having too much fun in here. Good to see everybody. Welcome to our Liberty County Board of Commissioners mid-month meeting. Mr. Brown, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Uh, yes, sir, it has.
As I guess I'll go ahead right here now and offer condolences to the family of Joe Parker who covered our meetings for a good bit of years. Several of you made comments via email this week about his loss. We certainly want to share publicly what his loss means to us because from what I know of Joe and what I've read, Joe, he always covered the commission meeting very fairly, without a whole lot of drama and emotionalism added to it. He just covered the meeting as it were. So we appreciate that and we appreciate his memory, appreciate him having come this way. So we send our condolences to the Joe Parker family. While I'm thinking about it, Commissioner Thiff also lost his sister since our last meeting. So we send our condolences out to the Thiff family. Commissioner Thiff is not here today, but she and her family also in our thoughts and in our prayers. I have an ass, but...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If my... You all may not, some of you all may remember 951, Danny Pittman. His service is going to be Sunday, better known as Cuz.
Yeah, we remember, remember. So our condolences to that family also. A lot of our community icons are passed on. We appreciate their service to community and country. Mr. Mosley, would you be so kind as to leave us our invocation? We will stand for our invocation and our pleas of allegiance, please.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we are so grateful for your bountiful blessings. We thank you for protecting us through the storm. And Father, the hazardous weather, we pray, Father God, for your divine wisdom and insight as this body deliberate business for this community. We thank you and we praise you. This we thank you for, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you. We happen to kind of get used to our new layout here. So y'all be patient with us as we adjust. As I mentioned, there's some happy people here, Mr. Brown. Even before their award, you want to tell us what's going on with these people? These new, newly enhanced people who served at Liberty County Board of Commission in this county we love so well.
Mr. Chairman, I'm proud to tell you that Mr. Mosley has been working with us on employee training and employee opportunities. And so we, this time, are recognizing those folks from the University of Georgia Carl Vinson Institute Supervisory Training Program. These are up and coming folks for us. Some of them have been here a little while, but we looked at them to move up and this was a good training program. And I want to yield a minute to Mr. Mosley who lined that up and if he will, just kind of give you a brief on that.
Mr. Chairman of the board, when Joe interviewed all the candidates for the city manager job, he asked, he said, Joseph, what are some of the things we can do to develop emerging leaders within the organization? And as we were talking, something ran across our desk from the Institute of Government and that was succeeding as a supervisor. And we sat down and we looked at candidates we thought would be great emerging leaders that we could get into class. And they tell me from different ones I interviewed that they had, as you could see and hear from them talking, they had tremendous fun and they learned a lot. We got feedback from a number of them. They said that this was one of the best classes that they've ever taken in terms of leadership. In fact, if I could go Chief Darby, he said that he definitely would like to get some of his candidates, his leadership candidates from the fire department in the class. He said it was excellent. And it was a very reasonable class. They did it all online, typically a class that they would have in attendance, but they did it online and they said that they enjoyed it tremendously. And again, I talked to a number of the emerging leaders who attended and they thoroughly enjoyed the class.
And we will have some others that actually had to be postponed because of some work issues, scheduling, and they're finishing up, going through right now. And so we'll have a couple of others recognized also. And then I think it's just the beginning for us on following some of y'all's mission of trying to get trained within and be ready. So that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, excellent. I'm thinking, shooting from the hip commissioners, these people will be presented certificates. So I'm going to go down, since we, I think we have enough space where we can spread ourselves out. Joey, let's do the certificates and then we'll remain standing for the proclamation so that we can do that immediately following. That work for?
Yes, sir.
All right. Commissioner, if you would go and let's just use this space we have here so we can appear socially distance on social media. So we won't get in trouble with that. And we'll do the certificates first, then we'll remain standing for the proclamation reading and presentation.
Who's your graduates? All of these are graduates?
Mr. Chairman, the person I want to recognize, these aren't in the order, this is Samantha Hagg. The next one is Frank Silver, right hand, man down there, that's Joe. The next one, sir, is Mary Lynn Calley, down in control, is our director, Steve Marri.
We're going to straighten back now. There was supposed to be an order for me.
This is from the building maintenance department. And this is one that Jerry Johnson stole from Mr. Jimmy Martin. And then the last, but certainly not least, is a lady that I'm not sure how she's still standing. It is your election superintendent, this is Ron Walton. I mean, I have to say in front of you guys and ladies, I thank y'all so much for what you do every day for us.
David, Mr. Thomas, I'm going to need y'all though. Joseph, I can't see you back there. David, can y'all, y'all, can y'all come in here? Okay, yeah, there we go. On the count of three, cheese. One, two, three.
We're going to get that out of the way, sir. Mr. Chairman, these are actually a couple of proclamations from the Keep Liberty Beautiful. And...
Ms. Karen Bell, prestigious board member is here tonight to say a couple of... I'm sure you need to explain this before we do the proclamation.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Keep Liberty Beautiful is so excited that this month is here and it's all about cleanup. It's Great American Cleanup is something that we do once a year with the American Keep America Beautiful. And this is a way that we can get our citizens involved in keeping Liberty County clean, green, and beautiful. It's from March 20th to June 20th, but we're having a countywide cleanup on April 17th. And I know the county is so interested in this date because it's when we go, not go against, how can I put this?
Challenge.
It's when we challenge Heinzville to the cleanup. And right now Liberty County has the trophy. And I've been told that Heinzville is really itching to get it. So, but it's a way that we get our community out and to keep us clean, green, and beautiful. We also are here for Earth Day. Earth Day is just a day that we celebrate our earth. We only have one, one planet, and we got to take care of it. And so this is a day that we, this is a day that we remind everybody about that. And we usually will have a big festival on the outside, but we know that with COVID, things will change or have changed. And so we're looking to make it a drive-through. We're just waiting for the permission and the approvals to come through, but we are planning. And just to let you know, we're looking at the main changes that each activity will be individually wrapped. So as they drive through, the child or the adult, because I like to do things too, you would get instructions and that activity to take home with you to do it. So that's what we're looking at now. We're looking at maybe 40 booths out there to keep it interesting. And we're just waiting. We are looking for booths, hosts. We have booths in the box. I mean, all you have to do is bring people, your tent, your table and chairs. And we would give you the activities and everything you need to do to run that particular activity. We, you can go online to use the QR code. So we getting up there? You just hit that QR code, it'll take you to the forum and even lay out every activity or every booth that's still available. Or you can even create your own. That's all I have to say, sir. Why he's signing that, we did bring some green bags because we want you to keep it clean and green that you can use when you go plogging or walking to pick up any trash that you see. Plus, you can use it on Earth Day to put all your activities in. So we'll be handing those out also.
And check out our website. We do have contests where you can win nice prizes.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
And we appreciate all your support and to do what you do. They came down and did a wonderful job. Thank you.
All right, more fun stuff. Now let's talk money. Mr. McGlough. Did you bring trinkets for us too?
It was in here. Oh, there you are.
Okay, everybody should have gotten their financial report. We just finished it today, as a matter of fact. Let me just highlight a few things for you. We've achieved about 70% of our total budgeted revenues. And we have exhausted about 65% of our budgeted expenditures. So we're sitting real good right now. At the end of February, we had approximately 5.8 months' worth of operational expenditures in our undesignated and unreserved fund balance. One year ago, this same time, we were at 7.6 months. Shouldn't be alarmed. Part of that has to do with the timing of when those tax payments get turned over to us. And as a matter of fact, just this week, we got another seven-plus million of those taxes. And this month, we also satisfied one of the designated fund balance items. So next month, when I come back before you two close the month of June, or close the month of March, that should jump up from 5.8. It'll jump up again because you'll have less reserved items and you'll have more inflow of cash. So just because it's 5.8 today and it was 7.6 a year ago, we're fine. Couple of departments that are running slightly ahead of schedule and continue to run ahead of schedule, elections, as we mentioned last time I was before you, they have completely exhausted their budget. Now that that special election is over, we will be able to better determine a true budget amendment that will be needed. And we hope in your April meeting, mid-month meeting, when I come before you, we'll have a full budget amendment to catch up all of those items that we have incurred that were not originally budgeted. And there have been several.
Let me do this, Kim, Joe, while I'm thinking about it. I think all of us know from the discussion last meeting that the East Placid election kind of, how do I say that diplomatically? It happened...
Sprung on us.
Yes. But now that we have time to move forward with that planning for future elections, we should be able to have a better, better manage that the next time.
Would hope so. Hopefully, the communication will flow.
Okay, and I guess as, as she's preparing her budget also, Rhonda is preparing her budget.
Yes, actually, all budgets went out. So every department should have their budget template. I've still got some of the outside agencies that I need to reach out to, but all of the Liberty County Departments, those under Mr. Brown and those under the elected officials have all received their budget templates. Those budgets are due back to us, I believe, April 9th. And then we will take about a week and a half to two weeks to get that information into our system, pile it, put together the budget books and all the other information that people send to us to give your budget books to you guys. And then we will have April 27th and May 4th, I believe, are the two dates that we've set aside for budget presentations. We haven't created that specific schedule yet. I'm still waiting to hear from and make sure that there aren't any schedule conflicts with some of those elected officials before I go ahead and make that schedule for you on those two days.
Okay. What two days was that we're looking at, Ms. Kim, roughly?
The 27th and the 4th, I believe.
I believe it is the 4th. I'll double check for you, Commissioner Stevens.
As I'm thinking, shooting from the hip again, there's not any, I know there'll be some municipality elections coming up, am I right? This year or is it next year?
I don't believe.
So we're good for the rest of this year?
I believe we have any remainder this year.
Okay, all right.
This fiscal year?
It's fiscal.
Or calendar?
I don't think we got any this calendar.
Yes, it should be.
Yeah.
When you are running, that's when the, is that when Midway or somebody else runs? Have their election? When this half of the, when it's time for your election again? Does it coincide with?
Midway's election is this year.
It'll be this year?
Well, maybe, maybe there is one more in this country year.
All other cities is in '23.
'23, okay.
Next year is half the school board, four district board members and half the commission.
2022, okay.
All the cities except for Midway.
Okay, all right.
President and all of us, all of y'all.
We'll fix you a little election schedule.
That'd probably be...
And I think that'll help us all.
I think that would help all of us.
Yes, it will. Maybe Rhonda already has that, but you know.
She probably does. We'll tag it.
All right.
So a couple, a couple of the departments running ahead of schedules, as I mentioned, elections, government buildings, they had to, they incurred some budgeted items, as I mentioned before, the security system in the Justice Center, the roof over at the old courthouse. And of course, all of this new stuff that you see in here was not part of the budget. So they're running a little ahead of schedule. Sheriff's Department as well, until we get that budget amendment actually approved and entered into the system, they will probably continue to run over budget until we amend that budget. Of course, roads, the road department, you know, they've made a couple of significant purchases this year, the, to Yancey and to Freightliner. And then you'll see it again. Another unbudgeted item was that street sweeper. So that'll be part of that budget amendment that I bring back to you. And as I mentioned before, the census coordinator, we didn't budget anything in it in the budget this year. We'll go back and amend that budget. And we did receive, we did build the other municipalities for their pro-rata share of those expenses. So that's not, you know, that wasn't all on us. And then, of course, the same thing for the operating transfers out. The biggest one that was not budgeted originally was for the fire department, the loan for the fire department that we received and transferred out to Splos to help cover the Island's fire station. So we'll bring that all to you so that you can have an itemized list of everything that your budget has absorbed that was not originally planned for. Solid waste, operating at a modest net income right now of about $380,000. I do expect that to drop once we post depreciation, but they're running fine. And they've got one department, solid waste disposal, that's running slightly ahead of schedule. And that's because of the payments that are having to be made to Broadhurst Environmental and Waste Hall Disposal for the trash services. All of your other special revenue funds, 911, victim witness, child support, recreation, record center, they're all operating within their budget parameter for this time of the year. Sales tax six continues to do very well for the month of, let's see where we are at here, for the month of February, collections were 853,000. And that represents January sales. So we're still coming in over budget. And for the total program, so far, we've got about another 25 months to go, but we're almost $1.23 million ahead of schedule. So it looks like we will probably, if we continue on this path, exceed the $54 million, which is great. And as Mr. Brown, I verified with Mr. Brown, even if we go over the $54 million, that's okay. It continues to collect. It's just the T-Splos you couldn't go over. And then your T-Splos report, I went ahead and broke it out for the district funds that you discussed at your planning session so that you can see what you specifically have in T-Splos available, the proposed distribution, and then what has been collected to date. And nothing in the district funds have been spent yet. And that's all I have unless somebody has a specific question for me.
Any questions for? None right now, we reserve the right.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Sure, make a note now for now, but you know, we've done well with getting our Avalorum out early to our citizens. I don't want to stop it where we are. We can improve that, so let's talk about that some...
Talking about the Avalorum. And of course, we can't do that until the digest is finished.
Yeah.
So, yes, sir, we, Kim stays.
We must improve it, but...
Yes, sir, and tax assessors and tax commissioner too.
Right. Commissioner Jones, that used to be, well, she, what was it, late December? We got them out, we pushed it up. We got it, we get it out earlier now. Of course, it doesn't make everybody happy. Some people still don't. We always try to get that tax bill out earlier. Engineering, Mr. Long.
Good evening. I'll get through these as quick as I can. I think y'all will be tired of seeing me before the night's over. Becky Street and Austin Street intersection improvements, we've got plans pretty much close to done. I talked to Mr. Giller about that a little bit earlier tonight. And we're going to go over it again tomorrow and make sure we've got everything covered. We're around 82,000 on his budget now for that one. Richmond Pass, we did look at that subdivision plot for you guys. Y'all passed that final plot earlier this month. The GDOT Safety Projects MOU, that's a separate item. I'll come back to that later on tonight. Cross Creek subdivision, we did do some drawings and some plots for Cross Creek. Looking at a lot of our contours. We do have some easements we probably need to get with my own chance to sit down with Mr. Lovett and kind of talk to you about that a little bit and see what we do have. So we can maybe try to figure out something.
Okay, thank you.
FEMA flood workshops, we did go to a FEMA flood workshop. It was virtual. Regarding the new maps that are coming out in the Flemington area, there were some, after the most recent revision in 2018, there were some things they found that they needed to change. So they're going through that process right now. So you'll see another round of maps coming out in 2022. So we're kind of going in and try to make sure we covered Liberty County on what we have in that area. Lake Shore Drive, we had a request from Ms. Martin about that section of Lake Shore Drive that goes through her property. We were able to provide some improvements that we do have on that. Little Park Fire Station, did a little bit of rearranging on the site plan on that. Yummers Road, Sykes Brothers is contractor on that job. Their completion date is August 30th. They are moving on that project and things are looking good on that. Third Street, they're pretty much done. We're processing... We're processing final request on it, and we did have them come back out. I think they were coming back out this week to correct an erosion issue. Just where we got some sandy soils on the edge of the road, it just kinda washed a few things out, they're fixing that. Man Oliver Church Road, this well underway, all the asphalt's done. We have the intersection of Man Oliver Church Road and Fleming Loop Road, where we're gonna put a little raised island out there and restructure that so that it, the traffic knows what to do in that area. Pioneer Road, that is pretty much done, a little bit of shoulder work needs to be completed, but for the most part, that project is complete. Recreation ADA accessibility, that's another item for tonight, I'll come back to it. And Melvin Lane, there, some of those driveways did get worked on as far as making them a little less steep. If you wanna still go out and look at it, we can still go.
Well, I, I guess I was gonna say, have they, you said that the work is already?
I thought they'd already done it, I hadn't been back out and inspected it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get back, I hadn't been out there, I went last week, they hadn't done anything.
Okay.
Who, who, who is the contractor?
Jason, well, Taylor's Creek.
Okay, same one that, that did the road, okay.
Yeah, Clinton had actually already talked to Jason about that, so I was thinking that it was already done, but I'll double check.
Okay, yeah.
Other than that, that's it for my report, and I'll be back up several more times.
Trent, quick question, the FEMA flood map, working around Peacock and Alligator, so that won't change any property owners?
Yes.
Desert, ooh.
Yes.
Will?
It will, yes, sir. So what it'll do is it'll remap some of the areas. For the most part, most of it is in undeveloped areas, but there are some ins and outs.
Are some?
And I don't remember the number of ins and outs, but it's, it's not horrible. I can get that number for you.
The outs aren't horrible, the ins will gonna be horrible.
Ins are horrible, yeah. Yeah, we, we, we take calls from the ends on a regular basis. And calls up, say, we were not in the flood zone before, now we're in the flood zone. And what we've been able to do on a lot of them is successfully, if their elevations are good, we've been successful at being able to go through a process to get several of them moved out. I think in the last two years, we've probably gotten twenty-five people moved out that got pulled back in. So just, it's a little process you gotta go through.
The subdivision around Performing Arts Center, will it be affected?
Uh, no, sir.
No?
We, we, they already knew what was coming on when we were doing all of that. And so what we're doing there is we're doing some overbank improvements to give the water a place to go so that it keeps everything where it needs to.
And that the Trevor Sykes development across from Applebee's?
I don't, I haven't looked at that one, but I think it's gonna be better off.
Okay.
Because all that way back there got raised.
Who district is that?
West Street did that.
Which one?
Who's district is that, across from Applebee's?
Uh, it's Max's, nope.
Same, Commissioner Jones. Is it Max's?
Believe it is.
It'll be yours.
I think it's Max's.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, I believe it.
That tis about five, my brother. They need some money. Yeah, it's chair, okay.
It's chair.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Got a question, Trent, on Cross Creek, would you read that statement again?
No, I don't wanna read that again.
As well as not as we has, and I, I didn't.
Okay, that's, that's, but you said you, you did a, a, a.
Yeah, we did some maps, and what we did is we overlaid a lot of the LIDAR contours on it so we could see what the elevation differences were. And then we pulled a lot of the elevations, remember, about twenty years ago, we did a master drainage study?
Right.
Hard to believe that's been almost twenty years ago. And we had a lot of elevations of the pipes in that general area, and we were able to pull those elevations, look at what the contours were. Unfortunately, there's some pretty huge easements we'd have to get to be able to make something work, but there's some grade to do some changes there to give it a little bit of relief, it's just, we'd have to jump through some easements.
But my general question, is it possible?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The other question I have for you, on Yoman's Road, I went that way this morning, and there's another tree I was looking at, right? There's a gas line marker right there on the left-hand side as soon as you come off the pavement. Are we gonna leave that tree right there? It's about, maybe, uh, maybe about a sixteen-inch.
Yeah.
Tree, are we gonna leave that tree?
I'm trying my best to leave as many trees as I can. So if, if it, if it looks, if it doesn't work out to keep it, I will certainly take it down, but we talked about several of those trees right there.
Yeah.
And, and trying to leave them, and so what we decided to do is we'd go ahead and leave what we could because we had so much attention to the trees in that area. And, you know, we wanted to see how it was laying out physically. I could see where it was on the plans, but, you know, when you get out there and look at it, sometimes it's a little bit different. So we were just kinda looking and trying to, trying. I, I get a bad rap for taking down trees all the time, but.
Right. Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, you own the industrial authority. Now, I made mention about that road coming out the other day, what have we, have we found out anything else more on that road? So was it like a service road, they said it's gonna be?
Which road now?
I don't know.
The one down on Long's Highway.
Oh, the one coming out there beside the school, the Dorchester thing?
Yeah, not the one where the construction, where they hauling the rocks in it, it's between those, that box covert that you were always talking about? It's right there, right between those two curves.
I can go back and look at that.
Service roads for new industry.
Doesn't seem to match the plans that I have way down there.
I sent it to Carmen, Commissioner Stevens, I didn't do any other follow-up, I just sent it to her. Like I told you, you said you received some complaints about it from the.
Well, I mean, not only complaints, if, if it's gonna be used for trucks, but that road between those two curves like that, and that road is already narrowing. When trucks are pulling out, they're gonna take up both lanes of that road, and cars are gonna be coming around those curves. It's a safety issue.
We'll do some more follow-up, but I, I sent it to Carmen.
Now, I've got a set of those plans, but I don't, are you talking about the box covert down by the leaning tree?
No.
No, not that.
By the industrial.
By the industrial part?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there's two driveways, one of them is a service road, and one of them kinda goes to the, the.
Rock plant, a cement plant, yeah.
Right.
It's that first one, it's between those two curves. That's my biggest concern right there is safety.
Yes, sir, they do, they do meet site distance, but understand where you're coming from, because I did look at that. But if you'd like to, I do have a set of those plans, and I'll, let's take a look so you can kinda see what's happening there too. Mr. Thomason, did all that work?
They did.
We do have a.
Well, they did some, I'll say it like it is, that's some unwanted design right there in that road on that two-lane highway.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Biggest issue that I've seen down there, Commissioner Stevens, is also when you're driving east and trucks start to turn in, I mean, you're up on top of them and there's no lane to go around them.
Right.
So you wind up in the woods, but I don't know who designed the, the way that is put in there. I, I don't know that it come to us to be approved for them to exit or enter.
It was, it came to us late, after, you know, after the, everything was broken out into the road. And I'll go back and, and verify it again, but I don't think that it met the warrants for a left-turn lane based on the traffic count in that area, but I will go back and, and review.
It came to us, we voted on it?
I don't remember that one.
It didn't come to you, it came to the, to the building inspections office late. So it was already under construction before we were.
I mean, because now that's gonna come back, putting the burden on the county. Either widen that road, turn lane, or something.
Yes, sir.
And that should have been figured in with that project from the industrial authority.
Yes, sir. Well, I'll get a set of plans over here, if I don't, I'd brought them with me tonight. Because you need a dump truck to carry the plans around with you. But that way, you can take a look at it and see what's going on, and I'll also send an email out again about the number of turns and the left-turn lane requirements, show you what, what we saw on that.
So we did take a count on how many left-turn lanes is gonna be going in and out?
No, we have counts on our road now, and they usually tell us how many vehicles they're expecting, and I can show you what's going on.
Well, that's gonna be the only entrance and exit on there, ain't it?
Two driveways there. But I, I'll, I'll get a copy of it and show you, I need to refresh my mind on it because it's been almost a month since I've looked at it, so I wanna make sure that I'm telling you the right thing. Because we're not doing the inspection on it, we just did some review for Paul. But I, I will have to get it out.
Who is the, who's the contractor, you know, Mr. Chairman?
Evan Concrete, Evan's Contractors is the contractor. I do not know who the site contractor is. I would suspect that it's Baker Constructors, I, I'll have to check. And like I said, Paul's doing the, Zekman's doing the inspections on it, so I haven't been involved with that portion of it to know who's who.
You need to get him and let's see what the issue is on that, because I, I'm like Commissioner Stevens, I sent the chairman the letter the other day, email on it. I mean, I've got complaints, and I don't even live down there, but one of the issues is what's happening now and then what's gonna happen in the end. I mean, you're gonna have a constant, uh.
Flow, flow of vehicles going in and out.
Project, is it?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two million dollar project? So.
That's what I understand.
You're gonna have more than two trucks a day going in and out of it.
Yes, sir.
They're all gonna be eighteen-wheelers, and it's gonna be issuing, and everybody's gonna be sitting up here wanting to know, why didn't I know something about it? And that's pretty poor, if you wanna know the truth about it, so.
Commissioner, Commissioner Warren, I will say it like this, and not bringing any shame to anyone, when I first mentioned it to the chairman, and he's on the Industrial Authority Board, he was unaware of that road going in, and also Mr. Brown. So who was aware, who was aware of this going on?
Well, I know that there's ought to be procedures in place, Mr. Stevens, that when they cut timber and they come on a dirt road, we know about it.
Right.
But if there's this type work going on, and we've got a project on Yoman's Road, and you're driving by it and you don't see it, then we probably need to be addressing some other issues. But we'll talk about it whenever y'all wanna talk about it. I, I'm just saying that when the time comes and the tractor trailer turns over there, you, it's already west of the old Dorchester road, so you may be able to route them around.
The dirt road.
Yeah, the dirt road, and let them beat their cars up, but I just, uh.
Yeah, we didn't.
Let's, let's just slow down just a little bit and let's figure out what's going on.
I'll get that information over to you, that way everybody.
I don't need it, the board needs it.
Yes, well, I, I was planning on doing that, yes, because we didn't get those until way late in the game.
Can you have me answer by, by, by next Wednesday?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, but I can, I can get all that stuff for you probably tomorrow, or Monday.
Okay, good, alright.
That way you got everything you need.
Alright.
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 Thank you very much, anything else?
That's it. Oh, what about Bill Carter Road, did you ever get an estimation on redoing Bill Carter Road?
I'll get to that tomorrow.
Okay.
Mr. Sanchez, final plat, Luke Road subdivision.
Assistant Public here, Mr. Chairman.
If we're not doing a redesign, I guess.
No, it, it shouldn't be.
Final plat.
So, good evening.
Good evening.
And Commissioners, this is a final plat for a subdivision owned by John Zen on Luke Road. Tiara Long did the engineering, it's twelve lots for single-family homes on nineteen point oh five acres. Luke Road is off of, this is Leroy Koffer, and this is Haber Sham, this straight little section here, which of course continues on, and then Luke Road comes around. And this is just, it's a long, narrow stretch, it has about over twenty-seven hundred feet of frontage on Lu, on Luke Road. In Liberty County. So here again, here's Leroy Koffer, and here's Haber Sham Road, which connects to Leroy Koffer. If you've been down that road in the past few months, you've noticed they've installed this really big American flag on the corner there. And Luke Road comes off of Haber Sham, and it circles around here. This I was in, I don't know, quite a few months ago, with the second phase of this subdivision. I'll be in next, next meeting for a preliminary plat for the remainder of this section here. So the preliminary plat does not include the colors, I just like to make that clear. I added those in just so I could point out a few features of this, this plat. So these are the twelve lots, they range in size from one point oh one acres to one point oh four. This small little purple area here, which is blown up in this section, is a well lot, it's nine hundred square feet. And this is a lot, tract one, it's five point one-nine acres, it's to be retained by the property owner. There is a drainage pond in this little corner here, and there's a drainage easement that starts at this side, west side of Lot One, and goes along the back of all the lots, and then discharges into the pond. This drainage easement is a privately held drainage easement, it's not being dedicated to the county for maintenance, as, nor is the pond here. What is being dedicated to the county is a strip of land along all, the entire front of two hundred, twenty-seven hundred and seven feet of frontage along this lot, the lots and this tract. It's twenty-four feet wide, and it's being dedicated to extend the right-of-way of Luke Road, which is only thirty-six feet wide, so it's substandard. And with the addition of this twenty-four feet, it will be, then meet the standard sixty-foot wide, wide right-of-way along this twenty-seven hundred foot stretch. The second part of the plat just has all the parcel lines and the signatures, which have all been signed and is sitting in, on Mr. Brown's desk. As I mentioned, the usable lot size is one acre, and the front and side rear setbacks are fifty, twenty-five feet, and twenty-five feet respectively. And this is all the stuff I just told you. And LCPC recommendation, staff recommendation, is approval of the final plat for the subdivision for John Zen on Luke Road, and acceptance of the additional twenty-four feet of right-of-way along Luke Road. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Question from Ms. Sanchez on her presentation. Here again, I guess the, the, the questions we normally would ask, is there anybody opposed? And, but this is the final plat, so this, yeah. And you all are recommending acceptance with the twenty-four feet of right-of-way to, to make it legal, I guess.
Bring it up to standard.
When did we approve the original?
Oh, God, it's been going on.
I thought this.
In pieces.
The one that, there was some discussion on, that never got off the ground. Because I think the right-of-way was the issue there, and I think Commissioner Bowen had brought it up about they wanted to pave it from there back out to Highway seventeen?
I don't remember.
I just had a few questions, it's not in my district, but I wanted to know what the, you know, we're getting twenty-five more feet of right-of-way, is that what you're saying?
Twenty-four feet, yes, sir.
Okay, and the road width is what now?
The existing right-of-way, right-of-way right now is thirty-six feet.
So you're gonna add twenty-five to that?
Twenty-four, yes.
Twenty-four?
Yep.
Bring the standard.
And then how far from the back of the right-of-way are the house, is the front of the lot gonna be?
So the front setback is fifty feet.
Fifty feet from the right-of-way?
From the, yes, sir.
And those will be individual drives at each house?
I believe that is what is anticipated.
So you'll have culverts under each driveway?
Trent could probably answer that better than I could, in the history of this property as well. I wasn't involved with, with the preliminary plating of it.
So the roadside ditch, Trent, will stay the same, you're just gonna add more driveways in there?
So this was done a bunch of years ago with AG Wells was putting this in. And we had it set up for individual driveways, but what they actually installed were shared driveways, so there are fewer driveways along the roadway. And he pulled the roadside ditch and improved it, so it's not, you know, the, the existing Luke Road roadside ditch is just a full motor grader blade, so he's actually improved the driveway, the roadway, and put the driveway pipes in, so all, all the pipes are in and functioning. Use concrete pipes, concrete flared in sections, and has all that installed.
But the, the water there, it's still gonna go back to seventeen?
It goes towards seventeen, and it's. It goes towards seventeen and it stops and there's a wetland area that it starts flowing through. I just like.
Goes over to?
Yes, sir.
Phillips Road.
It goes through the wetland system that eventually does go through Phillips Road. Yes, sir.
So, so why is the retention pond back here? What good is it for?
It stops the water bef- it slows down and buffers the peak flow from this development before it gets into the wetland system that flows toward Phillips Road.
Well, you know, you've had some issues there on Phillips Road. I remember Pat talking at one time about having some major issues there with that, so.
Yes, sir.
Is this going to, is this going to be an, uh, one of those things that you wind up accepting it and then the county's got the responsibility of fixing it all downstream?
Yes, sir. That's the one reason that, um, it meets the stormwater retention requirements so that you buffer that peak flow. Uh, just like with any development, uh, within Liberty County, we require that they buffer the peak flow so that we don't have that same issue. So what they have to do is they have to regulate their flow to the pre-development rate and that's what the pond on this site does.
That was, that was one of my big issues with what you were going to be impacting downstream and you say you've already looked at it. We, I think it was three months ago, we talked about your Alligator Creek and what's happened there with the water going under eighty-four. Now we, all of a sudden, three months later, we've got to be looking at more wetland map now, don't we?
Those are floodplain maps.
Whatever you want to call it, it's going to be flooded, it's going to be wet, so.
Yes, sir.
I'm just asking, you know, are we going, are we going to have something here that's going to be a constant battle?
No, sir. This is not going to contribute to the constant battle that's already there.
I'm talking about on Phillips Road.
On Phillips Road. Yes, sir.
So that, that issue there.
That's the whole purpose, that's the whole purpose of the stormwater retention pond that's there.
And this, so this water off the, off of those culverts will go into this retention pond?
Yes, sir.
I didn't, that's why I was trying to see where the inlet was at. And I didn't see it, so that's what I.
Now, we have everything graded. There's a lot of, a lot of it drains to the rear, to the big ditch that's in the rear. So there's a large ditch in the backside of this property that takes a lot of the water to this pond as well. So we take everything we can to those pond.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
Uh, could you go back and show me, go back to your map again? Let her go back. Are, now you're talking about Luke Road. How far down, Trent?
Can I walk over here?
Yeah, yeah.
Two, four hundred feet. Okay, so up here is seventeen. No, not seventeen, one ninety-six.
Okay.
Seventeen is way over here.
Okay.
If you travel Luke Road, it's about halfway. And if you were driving down the road, all of a sudden you just kind of come to an area that's kind of clear and has driveway lights and then goes back and this is the wetland area here and you just go back to the old section that you were used to seeing.
Alright. Hold your thoughts right there. Now, this is supposed to be a subdivision, right?
Yes, sir.
One of the requirements of subdivision is paving the streets, right?
It's required improvements or, yes, sir, if we're making new roads or new streets, yes, sir, we do.
Okay, so. Correct me. Paving in a subdivision, coming out to a dirt road. Right?
So, yes, sir. I understand where you're going. And, and so typically what has, has occurred over the years is if you have a, um, large number of lots, that requires paving of the road, you will do some paving of the road. And if I remember correctly, we went through this preliminary plat. And I'm, you know, I'm, if I'm wrong, I, I guess I, I didn't remember it not being approved, but I thought it was approved back when AG had it over years ago.
It came before.
Yes, sir. And that was just to go with these lots that are fronting on Luke Road. Now, the development of the rest of the Haber Sham plantation, um, is set up to go to the, the new spine road, which would, I'm going to walk over here again.
Everything's set up, followed was, was supposed to be a spine road, which would be Haber Sham Road, which would get paved all the way from Leroy Koffer to highway seventeen. Now, a lot of that depends on what these guys do that own the remaining tract of Haber Sham and how they want to develop with that.
So all of that is set up in a pud and all of that is set up to go to paved streets and take all the, uh, traffic off of Luke Road.
I just don't want it to be a nightmare for Commissioner Jones and myself, cause we do split.
Yes, sir.
That road.
Yes, sir.
I don't want it to be a nightmare.
Yes, sir. Understand.
But it has been approved, Joy. I mean, we know it's been approved.
I, I don't know. I'd have to go back.
Do you know it's been approved? Have you looked at it now?
I, I thought it was, but I hadn't gone back to the.
It wasn't a, wasn't a, it's been a while ago, but wouldn't have.
Yeah, well, it had to have been a while ago.
It's been at least two and a half, three years.
It would have had to be.
Because I can distinctly remember that there were issues about.
I remember Mr. Wells came.
That being on that road right there and, um, Pat was, you know, really, there was two issues that came up there. And Mr. Bowen said, one of them was to deal with, I'm going to build a park up in there if, and I'll pave the road if y'all let me do this subdivision. So I don't know what was ever decided to. I remember Mr. Wells came up and brought this, but I don't ever remember us ever having it because I knew individuals that live in this area that this is news to them. It may be passed. If it's passed, I mean, I, there's nobody wants to, uh, keep from folks from building houses. I say let them build. Cause all it does is add the digest, but if you go, you know, I, the issue is what impact is it going to have to this fellow across on Phillips Road? And I know you, if you've not been involved in any of the planning and zoning with this young lady here, then you ought to be able to tell them that, hey, the, what we got to do, we got to keep it from flooding Phillips Road, which is just a little ways around the corner.
Yes, sir.
And if that ain't going to happen, that's fine, but the minute it happens, you know, there's, there's not but one thing to do and that's get you five gallon bucket and start dicking water.
Yes, sir. No, sir, and, and for this, you know, this is like twelve lots and, you know, they're, they're large one acre lots. And all the stormwater is set up to go through the pond so that we don't impact, uh, Phillips Road.
So there won't be a driveway on any of them? A concrete driveway?
There may be concrete driveway.
So where's that water going to go?
We have everything set up to go through the pond so that we buffer to the pre-development flow rate. So in our calculations for the, uh, development, we take into account the impervious area from the rooftops and/or driveways.
And then it'll come down the driveway, cross the culvert pipe?
That's right.
And then it'll go in the road and then after it gets in the road, it'll go into the.
That's right. Well, you got, so, so, some of it's going to come to the road. Some of it's going to go to the ditch in the back. Then the water goes to the pond and then there's an outlet structure on the pond.
You hear him, Commissioner Jones?
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Mission, please. Um, that, uh, stormwater drainage, uh, we have issues as is. Um, especially on the highway seventeen side and somewhat on Phillips Road.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then I guess with this project, we're going to have the tendency to increase the amount of, I guess, stormwater drain off and all in that area. It's a problem as is now, especially on the seven, uh, highway seventeen side. Uh, there's been a lot of questions asked. It seemed like that we not have any definitive answers for.
Well, we do have definitive answers. I have calculations that show that the stormwater in, is not increased above the pre-development rate leaving this site. So I do have that definite answer and I have said that and I have certified that as part of the design calculations.
Um, I guess it would be left to me to make the motion one way or the other.
You let the commissioner from the area do that. But, but what engineer is saying, he's put his stamp of approval on.
Yeah, I understand.
That's what he's saying.
But, uh, excuse me, Mr. Chair. Uh, Commissioner Walton, you, you were concerned about, uh, I guess what a question about the driveways and, and if they were going to be some or not?
Yeah, well, what happens is the stormwater, if anytime you put down concrete asphalt or you, you change something from an area that is pervious to impervious, obviously the stormwater runs off faster.
Right.
And so what we do is we reroute all the stormwater to a pond to buffer that increase in stormwater runoff. So that we regulate the runoff from this site to the pre-development rate. So in this case, say you have a pre-development runoff of ten cubic feet per second. And then by the time you add the, uh, rooftops, the driveways and whatnot, we have, um, coefficients, coefficients that we use in our calculations that are, um, industry standard nationwide that says, okay, this is what you're going to happen with these sized lots. So we do a post-development calculation and it says the stormwater runoff is going to be thirteen cubic feet per second. Well, I've got to do something so that I don't release more than ten. So we build a pond with an outlet structure on it that makes that water stop in the pond, slows it down enough so that I only release ten cubic feet per second. Now, I don't, those are not the exact numbers for this site, because I don't remember what they were, but they are an example. And what we've got on this is we are reducing it to the pre-development rate.
Okay.
Okay.
And this is something we do on all our projects, just like, uh, Richmond Pass. They have a couple of ponds that they had installed that have outlet structures so that it, uh, doesn't increase stormwater downstream. Same way with Luke Road, there's a, a whole series of, uh, ponds that actually have somewhat made it a little bit better, although it used to be really, really bad. But there's still some issues out on Phillips Road. Uh, but there are a series of ponds in this area that are trying to back up that stormwater and make it better.
So again, I, I'm assuming you, you're putting your stamp of approval on it on both sides because, uh, you are the engineer on this project as well, right?
Yes, sir. What we did on this one, uh, several years ago, when we were working on this development, the, the Haber Sham development, uh, we were the design engineer on it at that time. And at that time, we didn't have, uh, review responsibilities with Liberty County. So we were free to do that work. And then when we took back over some of the review responsibilities, I was allowed to try to finish up some of the projects that I was working on. And this is one of the ones lingering out and you'll see one next weekend or next meeting that is trying to finish up part of what we had when we were finishing doing that particular subdivision. Now, we've got some, other people looking at some bigger pieces in there that we're not going to be working on. But just the, the pieces that we were already working on before we took back over the review responsibility, we're trying to work back on and finish up. That's why I'm here today on this one is because it's finishing up one that we worked on a long time ago.
Alright, alright. Mr. Jones?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I'll go back to what I asked earlier. Um, and not questioning nothing you do signing off on it or anything. But, uh, some of the residents over the years, you know, living right there, I've, uh, been in contact with some of the residents on Phillips Road. And especially where it relates to the, uh, stormwater drain off and all of that. From even where it joins in where highway seventeen plays a part in that area, they have issues with drainage as is. I think we even went in there here recently, within the last year and tried to do something with the beavers that's in there damming up the drainage and all and the waters backing up to Luke Road, back to Phillips, uh, Road also.
Yes, sir.
I really don't hear nothing that I guess sounds like we have going to remedy that. We just going to put more stormwater where we're going to have more to get rid of. Cause we had this issue before now, even before the Haber Sham project came up.
I understand where you're coming from. So, you know, what's happening on this one, especially with the, with this little one and, you know, the issue may, is going to come up again at the next meeting too, uh, with the, the, the next phase. There are the stormwater ponds and, you know, we have the regulations in place to allow people to develop land that's upstream of things and meet a certain criteria so they can move forward, um, and give them the ability to work. Now, yes, there's a, a historic problem on Phillips Road, uh, that's been out there, uh, for a number of years. Uh, even back somewhat before, uh, a lot of this was even started in the two thousand six, two thousand seven timeframe. Uh, there were some issues on Phillips Road, uh, cause I remember working on, trying to get some things worked and being a little bit better uh, back in ninety-seven, ninety-eight timeframe with, uh, Richard Moore, who was the road superintendent at the time. Now, part of the design of the whole Haber Sham is to try to help some of that. You know, and, and it's set up, these, uh, ponds are set up to buffer, um, a lot of stormwater. And, you know, it didn't remedy the situation on Phillips Road. They've still got some issues, but it's not as bad as it was back in the late nineties. So it is getting better, but, you know, if you live out there, you're not going to feel like it's better, because you're still having to go through times of the year where it's just wet and it's, you know, a swamp bottom where we have to go through to where you're having most of your problems there. Cause you know, when you kind of come in, then you go through, then you go through that real bottom and that real bottom is where your majority of your real issues are. You've got some other issues further back that are not necessarily related to these, but, um, the, 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 the thing is, is, you know, they're installing ponds and they're doing the work to try to protect downstream. And we're doing the design to try to protect downstream so that we don't make it worse.
If it happens so that these ponds, the retaining ponds that they are installing, just say they get overwhelmed. You know, whether it's rainy season or whatever, uh, what happens with the, uh, excess, the runoff when those ponds are overwhelmed, the retaining ponds that they will have in the development?
So there are maintenance, uh, requirements as far as the ponds go. It's one reason that the, uh, developer, John Zen, was holding on to this pond so he could get in there and maintain it as he needs to, to make sure that it is working. For the most part, as things come along and they come online, part of our MPD stuff is they have to sign, sign stormwater maintenance agreements saying that they're going to maintain their ponds, uh, while it's in effect, or, they'll maintain their ponds while the pond is in existence. And it goes from owner to owner so that the pond continues to work as the years go by. So like what you're saying, you know, what if, you know, the pond fills up with sediment and then it's no longer functioning, you know, who's going to dig it out? Well, that's where you set up these maintenance agreements so that the HOA property owner or somebody agrees that they're going to maintain it. And we have the right to go inspect it and say, hey, you got to maintain it. And it gives us a legal remedy if they're not maintaining it. So that if they do get overwhelmed, now if you get in a hundred year storm, you know, we require our, uh, all our design is set up to pass or to buffer the twenty-five year storm. And that's a seven points, well, actually in this area, right at eight inches of rain in a twenty-four hour period. So if it's an eight inch storm, we should be buffering the peak. Now, there's still water leaving the pond, but it's just not going any faster than it was before the development occurred. So now, if you get into where you have a pond that's designed for a twenty-five year storm and you get a one hundred year storm event, there are, um, emergency overflows that allow the water to pass. And our ordinance says that you got to allow the one. And our ordinance says that you got to allow the one-hundred-year storm event to pass through your system. So, yes, you may get a little more rainwater in a hundred-year storm, but they're still meeting our ordinances. That was long-winded, but I hope that, uh, answered your question.
Yeah, uh, somewhat, because, um, like I said, we, and your explanation about the hundred-year stuff and all that is a little bit over my head. But, um, I know in this same area we speaking of, um, it doesn't take eight inches an hour to just disrupt everything down there.
Oh, you're right.
You know, a couple of inches an hour, you know, then Phillips Road, Highway seventeen, Luke Road, it gets overwhelmed, it doesn't have to be a major rain
It does.
Um, event for it to, um, disrupt everything down there.
Yes, sir. You're right.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir. I was able to find this, I don't know, but, um, January the second in two thousand sixteen is when the issue first came up before the board and it was tabled to gather more information until the mid-month meeting. And then, in February eighteenth, the mid-month board meeting, um, there was a motion made by Commissioner Bowen, second by Commissioner Thrift, to approve the rezoning, uh, for that area for Mr. Wells, subject to a preliminary and final plat being submitted to LCPC, uh, for final review. In fact, in fact, in that, um, that a preliminary and final plat be submitted to LCPC for LCBOC approval in order to facilitate conference review of the entire development in relation to subdivision and other development regulations.
Twenty sixteen?
I would, um, the, the part about facilitating review, and I'm, certainly whatever the board wants to do would seem to indicate that you gave the authority to LCPC to review the final plat in that motion. But, it's certainly up to how the board wants to handle it. That was on February eighteenth to two thousand sixteen.
Mr. Wells, oh, yeah, I remember how long ago it was, a little longer than I thought it was.
It was a long time.
So, that's where we're at now, as, um, Commissioner Jones looks at this. Uh, and his concerns, as you hear about the drainage.
Yes, sir.
Um, and of course, you heard engineer say that he has, his, uh, obligation, for lack of a better word, are that his plans cannot worsen the drainage. He had to at least, um, draw his plans where the drainage before the subdivision there is the same as after the subdivision. Now, beyond that, I don't know what else can be done, um, uh, 'cause the Phillips Road, that's another whole subject, um, a, a related subject, but, uh, but what, but what I hear you saying is what you're doing now won't worsen the drainage on Phillips?
It won't make any, it, it won't, it won't harm Phillips Road.
Yeah.
That's kinda hard to say it that way. Won't make Phillips Road any worse than Phillips Road is now.
Yeah. That's what I heard you say, so. And, and all we can do, I guess, Commissioner Jones, from this point on, is, you know, you get with Trent, y'all look at Phillips Road and see what else you maybe do to, to improve it.
Those individuals will know that Luke Road is not, unless somebody's got some money, you can't pay it.
Right, it's not the cause of their, right.
Uh, one more question, please, though, the developer, I guess the owner, same person, developer, Mr. Zen.
Yes.
Are we familiar with his work, has he done developments in the county?
He's not done developments where he's doing a lot of work, he's done small lots, but, uh, Mr. Wells had already put in everything before Mr. Zen bought the property from him. So, all the driveway pipes are in, and the ditch is in, and the pond is in. Now, he's got an emergency overflow that he needs to, uh, put in, but that'll get put in probably within the next couple of weeks and be done.
Trent, this is from an operational thing, and I apologize, I hadn't looked at this, but the private drainage management, wh- wh- what's the plan for the homeowners to be required to maintain that so that the flows work right and the county doesn't end up
We will.
back in there maintaining drainage management?
That's where we'll make sure he signs the, uh, water, the water maintenance agreement.
Okay. So, it'll be, it'll really be Mr. Zen's responsibility? It won't, it won't transfer?
He'll work that out with the property owner.
So, it won't transfer with the deed?
It'll transfer with the deed. Where, where a maintenance agreement works is it transfers with whatever deed it goes with.
So, for transfers with the deed, it goes to the homeowner?
Yes.
So, is there obligation to make sure that everything?
It just stays open, yes.
Right, and then, and then it's gonna be his obligation to make sure that the pond?
Stays functioning, yes, sir.
Even after he sells all the lots?
Yes, sir.
All right.
He has a good question, when does the bonding process take place?
We have, uh, a bond for the, uh, overflow structure in place, and we have the bond for, we have two bonds, the maintenance bond. Maintenance bond is in place.
In place, all right. Good question.
So, we wouldn't, we, we wouldn't kick loose any permits down there until?
You can kick loose permits on your, uh, like, development of buildings and all on there soon as the final flat stand. But, the bond, uh, for the performance of, you know, doing the outlet structure is, you have like six months to do that. And then, the maintenance bond is two years?
Three years.
Okay. All right.
Guess I'll make the motion to, uh, move forward with the recommendation that has been presented before us.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second to, uh, prove, yes, LCPC's recommendation, I think duly noting your concerns about drainage. Trent, you're hearing very well. You hit them very well.
Well, we'll probably do too, 'cause this issue will come up again in your regular meeting. 'Cause you'll have a, a preliminary plat for the backup and that, and I'll bring you some calculations that we have showing what's happening with the ponds.
You know, with, with Commissioner Jones being new, I suggest you meet with him prior to, so y'all can have that one-on-one, then, then we come to the board, he can ask any questions he wants.
I, I, I can get you and we'll go ride and look, and if anybody else wants to look, I'll take you out there and let you look too.
Commissioner Jones, he charged you for riding.
Drive my own vehicle.
Have somebody else charge you.
All right, all in favor, all in favor of the motion on the floor, let me know by raising your right hand. Any opposeds?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to say, um, I mean, we've already voted on it, um, I second it. Understand Mr. Um, Mr. Jones and everybody else's concern. But, you know, we, we, we did, um, get assurance that, uh, this development will not have an adverse impact. And, um, you know, Mr. Long is the, the engineer for this project, he's also our engineer.
Yes, sir.
And, um, in between, uh, him stands LCPC. And Ms. Um, Ms. Sanchez is the engineer for them, okay? And, um, it goes before them and the planning commission approved it. Uh, now, um, the proof is in the pudding whenever, you know, with the things that we're concerned about, if it happens. But, um, the, the calculations and everything is really all we have to go by. And, and, um, and that's what we have, and so, you know, so we made that decision, um, we, um, it's more than just a belly rub, it's, it's calculations and it's, um, we not gonna sit here and knock on wood, because knocking, if knocking on wood helped, then you wouldn't have to vote. And we not gonna sit here and rub our bellies either, because it feels good. We, we going by this and, um, and, and we gonna move forward with it.
The science.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Recreation. Spring has sprung, spring has sprung.
Yes, it has.
It will spring.
And I'm glad to tell you guys that you made a lot of people happy by approving this plan to have spring programs. We are in the midst of our spring soccer, track and field, and baseball and softball programs. Soccer and track are kinda wrapping up now, baseball and softball just getting started, about a thousand participants in those programs, which is a lot less than we normally have in those programs. Uh, seems that quite a few people have, you know, very cautious, they don't, they don't want, we hear that from a lot of our normal participants. They said, I'm, I'm not ready to jump back in yet, but those that are doing it are having a great time. Uh, the procedures we put in place to, to minimize amount of contact and interaction we had between participants has worked pretty well. Um, happy to say that we have no known spread of the virus from these programs. So, it, something, something has worked. I would like to address the, the limited use of facilities policy that we have been, been utilizing for, for some, for some time now. Basically, on our outdoor facilities only, all the indoor facilities and programs remain closed. Uh, walking trails, boat ramps, fishing piers never were closed, just, just as kind of a review of, of where we're at. Um, the, the facilities that are not available for use at this time include playgrounds, basketball courts, skate parks, and rental of outdoor pavilions. So, the limited use po- policy has included ball fields, tennis courts, and batting cages. And the way it works is they have to apply or for, to be approved to use the facility, then they have to make a reservation for use of the facility, and then we have to monitor that use of the facility with our staff. And, and that, I'll tell you that that procedure worked pretty well, very well, actually, prior to us starting those spring programs. However, now, all of our staff is tied up running spring programs and we're having a very tough time also monitoring the use of those facilities in addition to running spring programs. So, uh, I do want to, you know, take the board's temperature, so to speak, on, on reopening some of those facilities, or perhaps, uh, doing away with the limited usage of those facilities that we're allowing use of now. Recommendation would be that we, we now allow use of ball fields, tennis courts, batting cages, even taking into consideration opening playgrounds and skate parks and basketball courts as well. I, I do not recommend opening, re- reopening pavilion rentals, because I think they serve as a gathering point for, a, a spot of gatherings, more so than, than some of the other activities, which are basically, you know, those people that come and utilize those facilities, uh, on their own. Uh, but, but as it stands now, we have a lot of people that are ignoring closed signs or even locked gates and fences and utilizing facilities. And, you know, it then becomes up to our, our staff to, to go around and police that, uh, which is not pleasant, uh, and sometimes unsuccessful. So, I, I bring that problem to you gentlemen tonight and ask for some assistance with it.
Would this free up, would this free up some of your staff members?
It will.
Open up?
It will free some up, they have other duties in addition to that as well.
But this, but you'd be heading back in the direction of normal operation?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I mean, how many people is, in, when they play soccer like they were there on that other night? How many of them are in each team, like, when they're playing against one another? On the field at any time?
Different, different age divisions have different numbers. Um, I believe your grandson's in the six and seven-year-olds. I think there are, um, eight on the field at a time.
In two playing.
In a particular league.
Eight?
Two teams playing.
I tell you, it looked like two, because they were all wadded up together, just like that.
There, there's no social distancing with that.
And I, well, I noticed that, and then I was watching them play softball or baseball over there, and, you know, I was amazed, I thought it was just my kids, but when somebody hits the ball, all the kids go for the ball. Outfield, infield. Some of them even come off the bench. Seven people down there after that one ball.
And no one picked it up?
I'm saying that that's against the coaches or nothing, I'm just saying, they just, everybody wants that ball, so, I mean.
They really do.
They're not, um, and I mean, you know, you did have them folks at the front checking when you went in, you know, but when they'd come in the gate, you'd have a mask, and then immediately they'd take the mask off and be on the bench, so.
And their main duty was to try and, and, and keep the staggered of ti- times in, in place. Those teams that had like the second game, uh, you know, they are asked to wait until the first teams finish their game and leave before they come in. Now, now what we adapted that to was, okay, it's all right to come in and, and go with that, as that group to another area that's not being utilized. And that way, we could still keep them away, reduce the amount of interaction as much as possible. But, that's basically the job of those, those folks that are there at the gate, to provide hand sanitizer and, you know, basically try to enforce the new procedures we have in place.
Well, and when we talked the other night, um, you know, I, I, I pretty much said, you know, what is your feelings on it? And your feelings on it was similar to mine, I didn't realize how many other places were utilizing them. Now, you know, we're sitting up here with masks on, and you're standing there without a mask, but, you know, that's required.
Too late now.
It's required, you know, to, I'm in the building and do that.
Standing by himself, though.
Sir?
So, he's standing by himself?
Right, yeah.
Vaccinated too, sir.
And, and that's exactly the way I would be, and you'd be social distancing, and that's, when I see the coaches down there, that's what they're doing, they're social distancing. But, I mean, your recommendation would be to have everything going except for the pavilions? What would be the plan for the pavilions?
Well, again, I, you know, the only reason that I, I'm reluctant to go back to reopening the pavilions is because typically, when someone rents a pavilion, it's to have a gathering. And those, those folks, or you think about the size of that pavilion, it's a much smaller space than, say, the soccer field or the softball field, or even a basketball court. And they're gonna be a lot more in close pro- close proximity to each other. So, that would be my only reservations about rental of facilities. I mean, I'd love to, you know, to start opening those back up and, you know, get some of the revenue that we used to get from, from renting those facilities, but, um, I just think, my opinion, that's, that's a little worse than opening the other facilities, which are outdoor and spaced out a lot further.
Well, and I, I know I, I have, in the past years, I've spent a lot of time down there with you, and I have it here recently, and, um, and you've always done a good job, and you got a good group of people down there, Jimmy and I, I will tell you, they were doing a good job the other night, not just the ones I was at, but I walked through the, the upper grade soccer fields and saw them at the concession stand area, you know, there'd be people sitting there, so, um, you know, I'd like to think that we've hired a man that knows what he's talking about, and I, I feel like that, you know, you, it's a recommendation, I don't have a bit of problem supporting you on that, uh.
Also, went to the liberty of asking several surrounding counties what their policy was, and I, I can't find any that have closed their outdoor facilities, they're all available in the manner that I'm recommending, basically. Um, they're open for use by the public, you know, at their own discretion.
You, you're making me think, even when it comes to the, uh, pavilions, they're outdoor pavilions. When the folk wanna social distance, is their, is their call, but they certainly can.
That's true.
There's no, I don't see much difference in, uh, being under one of these pavilions versus being sitting on the bleachers in the soccer game.
Well, the bleachers are closed, I understand what you're saying, yes, sir.
We came out the other night, we saw, I mean, I'm, and we, we, listen now, we came out of the Schuman wreck, and we were happy to see that activity going on, I promise you, we were. God bless America, kinda thing.
Yes, sir.
So, here's my point, your, your pavilions, other than the one here at Schuman, uh, not, uh, Stafford, Liberty Independent, is closed then, but the others are open air.
That's true.
I don't, I don't see any reason why you let, let folk police themselves.
They, they open, but they, but they confined by, by the fence, though, right?
We do, most of them are fenced, yes.
Right. I mean, it's, it's open, but it's, the fence keeps it locked, so you, I know the one in Homestown has a fence around it, one that, um,
The seating areas.
The one at, um,
I'm thinking about what it is.
Irving Thomas Park, I mean, I mean, they had, all, all of them are fenced.
James Brown. All but the one at Jesse Stevens.
James Brown.
James Brown not either. When y'all use it on the soccer.
Well, oh yeah, with that, we don't really consider that one of our rental pavilions.
No, it's not.
Concession stand used for soccer activities.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, myself as well, I've had to have opportunity to speak, you know, not to just Mr. Martin, but, you know, some of the parents and also your, your great staff. And make sure that, that you let them know how we feel about everything that they've had to go through for the past year.
I will do that.
My kids are participating in the spring programs. When I was running forward, the other one was running backwards, but they out there having a good time.
They're a lot faster than they're today.
Yeah, yeah, you're absolutely right, and I try to race them. But even with, with the track program, it, it was great because the, the girls were on one day, the guys were on another day. Of course, you know, like myself, when I have a one on each team, you know, it makes it a little difficult, you know, for timing, but it, the way how, how you all handled that whole situation, like you said, the, the bleachers were closed down. The kids that were participating were basically in the middle and, you know, the parents were, for the most part, social distancing. You know, the, the families that came together stayed together.
They will.
So it, it kind of worked out. And of course, you know, now I have one in baseball and, and just like you were saying even about the, the batting cages. It's kind of difficult for us to say, okay, well, if, if you signed up or, you know, baseball, you could use it. But if you didn't, you can't use it, or we have to take someone on the staff to monitor them. And I, I just, I guess I'm just like Commissioner Walden as well. I, I know I, I sent an email about it and I just tried to get a temperature. I think our temperature is warming up a little bit, especially since Mr. Brown turned the air down or up, whichever way, I don't know, man. It was, it was getting cold over here on this new side. Right. Yeah, it was, it was getting a little chilly over here, but I, I don't know, Mr. Walden, I'm, I'm in support of it as well. You know, especially outside facilities, the basketball courts, playgrounds, because now they're, they're still using it. You know, I mean, they're, they're past even reading the signs, you know, so whatever we could do to help support your staff and, and limit them being stretched out, so while, since we are opening up other programs, I'm in support of it, Mr. Chair.
Yep, Mr. Chairman. Jim, and I think the, the programs that you have opened up and, you know, got them back up and running. But, but you did say something, you said that you had limits and you had precautions. You, you had steps in place to, to limit, you know, there, there was limitations. Number one, it was less people than you normally have, and then the ones that did show up, you had a plan in place. You and my brother Ricky and everybody else that worked around there wouldn't have a prayer at that basketball court by Popeyes, the one over there where I'm the old time leading scorer on Rebecca Street. You, 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 you can't go down there on a Sunday or, or right now and put your precautions in place at an outside basketball court. You, you, you just won't be able to do it. And when we shut down the one by Popeyes, it was because of calls we had where there was, and I'm not going to say a thousand, but it was as many people as could gather was gathered. Now, a league game, whether soccer, baseball, track, we opened it up and you had your rules. It was governed by you, your staff, and y'all did these things. But, but you, you can't do that on a Saturday night at Stafford Park Basketball Court. You can't do that at the park in Homestown, you, you, you just can't do it. You can close it, but you cannot open it with those same precautions. And Ed has said it, we are still wearing masks and we're still in the midst of a pandemic. And the things that we can control or try to control, we do that. Now, you also said that, you know, people jumping the fences and playing basketball anyhow. Well, that's against the law, I mean, that's against our law. And just like drinking and driving, people drink and drive, but you're just going to say, well, let them do it because they're doing it. If the fence, if the park is closed, it's closed and violators will be prosecuted because that, that, that's the law. I mean, you're just going to say, well, they're doing it anyhow, let them do it. You, you, you can't do that. And you can't, if you open up that basketball court, and, and my brother called me, he said, hey man, we need to let them in. But I'm here to say that you cannot regulate that the way you can at field three at five o'clock at a soccer game. You, you can do that, you got, you, you can do that, but you can't do that next to the National Guard armory at that basketball court.
That's true.
And whatever we've done in this county and whatever is happening across this nation, we've been blessed. And even when you had the spring sports, you said that we hadn't had no outbreaks, no, you know, no super spread of events or nothing like that. And we'd, and we'd be committed for that. But we cannot do that at one of those basketball courts. We, we just can't. And, and that's my thought and we could vote, and I just told y'all how I'm voting.
And tell Ricky when you see him.
He's probably listening.
Okay.
How about, how about, excuse me, how about the playgrounds?
I, I was going to echo that, you know, it, it's pretty much the same at any of these facilities we ju, I was just talking about. You have no control over the playgrounds, you have no control over the basketball courts. There are some that are a lot more popular and also are easier to control access to. And, and I'll use the basketball courts there in Stafford Park as an example, they've got a six foot high fence around them. So they're easier to control, you can lock them, we have people in the proximity all, very often, you know, we can stop, we can stop that. And, and we even went so far at some of the outline parks as to take the goals off of the post.
That's what, that's what the city did at Jack Carter.
Right, and we took a page out of y'all's book and, and we took the goals down at Hillary Park because we, it's way out there and we couldn't control access to the courts. Saying all that to say there, there are some that you can control with the fence and others that you can't. Stafford Playground, Playground right behind the pool, there, behind my office, has a fence around it. We have people in there, around that all the time, we can control that fairly well. All the other playgrounds, none of them have a fence around. So you, if, you know, you open them up, it's, it's, you know, it's free for all, I mean, whoever wants to use it. You know, again, I think Mr. Chairman said that everybody has to take some personal responsibility in this and, you know, utilize the information that we've been given for the past year and exercise caution.
And I think we've done that, I think this board and, and you have and.
This board has exercised great caution.
You know, they, they've done it and I, I, you know, I understand exactly what Mr. Gillard's talking about. Because there, there are things that we can't do anything about. We can put a sign up and put a chain around it or a cable, but, I mean, you know, the pavilions, I agree, if it's open air, you can get underneath it. That'll be the next thing that we probably have to try to do, but, you know, we're, we're saying we're playing soccer and, and like I said, it's, they're all knotted up together, so whatever one's got, the other one's got. And I can tell you, it don't make no difference if you come in there, you can't bring but orange, green, and red Gatorade, okay? And everybody's going to take a drink out of each one of them because they're going to see which ones it is. I mean, that's just it, I, I'm, I'm not for spreading the pandemic, I think we did a great job with it and we all supported one another and we all, you know, got different opinions on it and that's the way it's always going to be. You know, we have to listen to you on some things, Jimmy, and that is your honest professional opinion. And you've talked to people and that's what I'm going on. I'm sorry we hadn't talked before now, but I mean, I, I understand that you think it would be, you can police it now and that's it. And now you know how I'm going to vote on it.
Yeah, well, let me, let me please state that, I hope I didn't say that we would police it because I don't think we can do that. I think if we open them, then we're saying that, you know, we're going to allow free use of it without us trying to police it. And like Commissioner Gillard said, some of those areas are going to be hard to, hard to digest. Basketball courts there by Popeyes are going to be packed, I'm sure, just like they were.
Well, you know, and we, courthouse, the courthouse, this building here will open up in the morning at eight o'clock for business. And people that come here will be required to wear masks. I mean, so, you, you know, and there, there's a reason for that. I mean, you know, we, we have not eliminated that, that risk. I mean, we, 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 we're going to require that until such time that we don't, you know, so. And there's a reason that we're doing that is because we are still in the midst of a pandemic. And if, if all we have to worry about is somebody going beyond the no trespasser sign, then, then we, we need to beef up patrol, beef up policing, beef up whatever. But to say that, that's one of the reasons why we, and I don't know if you, you didn't say it that, that way, but that should, we may as well let them go because they're going anyhow. No, we need to stop them because they don't need to go.
Understood.
Okay.
Commissioner Stevens. Well, I only got a couple of parks down there where I'm at, one of them is fenced in, no, none of them is fenced in. Just the pavilion at Briar Bay is fenced in.
Correct.
The pavilion at Jesse Stevens is open.
It's open, somebody had a birthday party there last weekend, I think.
Yeah.
Unbeknownst to us, but.
Eve Park is.
It, well, it's sort of enclosed, it's got a screen, you know, part of its screen and part of its block.
Jones Creek is utilized a little bit down there. But there's no playground facility right now at Miller Park because it's been removed, replacement. So, hey, if we can provide service to some, I'll say, I'm willing to say, let's try it, watch it real close. I mean, and hey, if it fails, then we go back the opposite way.
All right, so just for the matter of record and for reminding me, your, your recommendation again is to, is what?
Well, and a lot of it, I want to clarify a little bit, is based on what I hear from surrounding counties and others in, you know, that are similar agent, recreation agencies like us, you know, hey, what's, you know, we all talk a lot and it's, you know, how are y'all handling this? And, you know, for, for all of the ones I talked to, it was, we, we knew we couldn't control those outdoor facilities, so we've left them open. And, you know, I would equate it somewhat, and we spoke about this a little bit before in past meetings, you know, the school facilities, I don't think they're necessarily open and invited to come use them, but they're not closed, there's no enforcement of any closure. And, I mean, they're widely used, playgrounds and basketball courts and, you know, that sort of thing at, at the schools as well.
Okay. All right. You heard the recommendation from the Director of Recreational Services, he's, he's brought this before us to.
And Mr. Chairman, I could, I would say this, I, I would include the open pavilions, you know, based on the comments you made about that. So basically all of our outdoor facilities, to reopen all of our outdoor facilities.
Me outdoors, outdoor.
So your, your recommendation is that we party like it's 2019?
No, sir, I didn't say that.
That's what it sounds like, but.
All right. Chair and tenor motion from the body.
When's the party? I, I'm in favor of, I mean, I, I've listened to Jimmy and we've hit butted heads a few times, but, you know, this is an issue right here that I've come to realization that he, he's got an organization down there that can handle what needs to be done and he's got cell phones to call the police to run the rest of them out. So I'd say let's follow the, the guidance of our Recreation Director. We paid too much money for him just to be asking.
I don't know, but I hope that was on the record.
Motion to second, we approve the recommendation as provided to us by Recreation. I'm, I'm also reminded too that, something I've been hearing lately, the basketball, I guess all of it does, but there's a lot of discussion now about the, we don't say mental health anymore, the behavior health, especially of our, our young people, and how being locked up has really caused emotional problems. And, and that they really need every opportunity to, to get out and be active and express themselves and do the things, to help to divert them from all this thing about COVID. Now, much like others have said, I don't want to be known as Liberty County the super spreader county.
No, sir.
But I haven't heard that even from the schools, you know, from, I know they've had some exposures, but there's been exposures everywhere. But not to the tune where they've had to close down the school, yeah, they may have to quarantine, none of the basketball teams have had to quarantine, that kind of thing.
That's true.
And I'm hoping as we, more and more folk are immunized, are vaccinated, that we'll have less opportunity. And then the day will come when even the young people will have their vaccinations.
Absolutely.
Yeah. But so, so I, I concur, my heart goes out to young people especially who need an outlet, maybe an outlet, to help them, that probably will help them with their schoolwork, you know.
That's true.
Be able to get them.
Well, Recreation contributes to a well-rounded life.
Yeah.
Sure.
Just drive over there to 503 Martin Road and there'll be a school teacher tell you what it's like.
Yeah.
I got to hear it every day, twice a day.
Mr. Martin, like I said earlier, we just try to keep a close watch on it and we start hearing of what we don't want to hear, then we just get reversed.
Understand.
You know, go backwards, but we pray and hope it doesn't happen.
I agree. And I'm sure there will be, you know, some, some instances where there are issues and, and one of the statements I made earlier was about the ability, the ability to close down some of the facilities. For example, those basketball courts where that problem, you know, is most prevalent, they can be locked. I mean, to me, if that's where the problem is, we lock that court, we still have other courts open, but that court is where we have too many, we lock that court.
And I agree with Commissioner Stevens, you know, maybe, let's say this is March, maybe, maybe, may you come back to us and there's a, update us.
Yes, sir.
There's a problem, we'll address it then, we can always reverse.
Everything, everything's open, like a, like a border pandemic, right?
Not, no, no indoor facility.
No indoor.
Or program, no indoor programs or indoor facilities have been nor, nor recommended to be.
Yeah, complex will still be closed.
You're going to put the, the rims back up on the basketball courts?
Yes, sir. At Hillary.
Let them go out. And I guess it'd be up to Kenny Howard and them, whatever they do to the one over here, because the city actually, I guess, I mean, we get support from the county, but the city actually owns that park.
Irene B. Thomas?
No, uh, Jack Carter.
Jack Carter.
Right.
Off Rebecca's.
Yeah, we, now, other than, you know, our, our help with restructuring that court, redeveloping that court, we, we haven't have been involved in any of the.
But it is, I'll see what Kenny wants to do with that, but, um.
He has expressed a desire to be consistent with the county and the city in the past, with Irene B. Thomas especially. We've never really discussed Jack Carter.
All right, enough discussion, all in favor of approving Mr. Martin's recommendation, let nobody raise your right hand? Any opposed? One? That's two votes.
Not one vote, Dan.
All right, sir, move forward. That'll be effective when, sir?
Uh, we will start taking down closed signs tomorrow.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, I, I do, I want to say this on Mr. Martin's stand, I, I think, Jimmy, there was a time or two you came here and it was brought up to, with everything being closed, what were you and your staff doing, what was your staff doing? And, you know, you're not playing ball, you're not doing this, you're not doing that, what are they doing? And I can tell you that on my way to Hunter, we got a contract over there. I always take the, the long way around instead of going Leroy Koff, I take 84 so I can blow the horn at Marion when I go through his district. But I, but I, I would stop at Jane's at, at Miller Park and, you know, use the bathroom or what, what have you. And I don't know what they've, the staff was doing, but whoever maintains that, that building, that, that bathroom, and, and it's open to the public, but, and you, you open the door, the light comes on and that bathroom is as clean as the Board of Health. So may, maybe not Ricky, maybe not you, but the ones that was working, somebody cleaned that bathroom.
There, there are several ladies that do a.
Well, I mean, there's, you know, so I, I just want to say that, so maybe y'all wasn't playing basketball, but somebody was cleaning the bathrooms. I, I want the record to reflect that.
We actually, that Friday, we went to the park at in Homestown, and it was clean, remember?
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah, you you went in the women's bathroom, I I went, I went in the other one, the men's bathroom.
But I mean, we were there inspecting them.
Yeah, 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 I mean, but it's, they they, so there was some work going on when they weren't playing basketball, so I I want you guys to know that.
Those those folks that are doing that did a great job, I would vouch that others are doing a lot of other stuff too.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You hang around a minute for the, all right, Trent, you coming, let's see, where am I? Oh, I gotta move back up, I'm thinking Recreation Hazard Mitigation Plan, Mr. Daw, yeah, he's been patient.
Mr. Daw, if um, you just did this presentation at the City Council meeting, I was over there, so if you if you want me to tell them what you said, you you could go on the skip.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Brown, Mr. Moses, thanks for having me tonight, you all know Trip.
Hello, sir.
So, I can happily say, so our Hazard Mitigation Plan, we started way back in January of two thousand nineteen, we had our kickoff meeting. So after eleven planned events, and then we conducted a a public event in April of two thousand twenty. The plan is at FEMA, it's got approved, um, and now we are asking for a resolution to adopt the the plan, sir. Uh, the plan was written by uh, old Bold Planning out of um, Nashville, Tennessee. And if we have some questions, we can get them on the phone due to uh, COVID restrictions, they was uh, they wanted to be here, but they couldn't travel.
I don't know that, and one commission's already been briefed, I don't know that we need to have them on the phone. Sir, you, we're gonna consider you the resident expert? You presented to us, Mr. Jump, Mr. Brown, you had a chance to. Okay, all right.
We just blaming on those two, Mr. Chairman, if you'll entertain a moment?
Duly noted.
Was that a motion?
Duly noted. Uh, second.
All right, Motion is, secondly, we approve the Hazard Mitigation Plan that has been vetted.
Wow, you got that easy.
Resident expert.
I mean, if it had been any issues, Commissioner Gillard would have said.
Well, yeah, I but I heard him over there, but I I'm gonna let y'all know this, now that the presentation he did over there was totally different. Totally different, totally different, I mean, so I don't know if we buying the same thing, but uh.
It's the way it was in the lineup, I guess.
It's a coin flip.
All right, sir. All in favor of approving the resolution for the Hazard Mitigation Plan? All right, sir.
Thank you, boss.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Thank you for getting us through today's weather, good job of being on that. Worked out quite well, quite well.
Glad I jumped up and down.
Quite well. All right, Trent.
Trent like again.
I've been.
I hope I can do uh, the Recreation Park and Gil Park reapprovements both at the same time, if that's okay with you.
Yes, sir.
Well, if you have to take a vote or anything, we'll do that separately, but um, the MOU for the off-street, off-system striping, we've talked about that several times. Uh, that would be the last three pages of your uh, um, letter report. It looks like this. Basically, it includes a list of roads and streets that'll have some widening, some signs and striping uh, throughout Liberty County. Um, we just need to go ahead and get this memorandum of understanding uh, sent over to uh, DOT. All it says basically is, we're gonna clean the edges of the road, got to do a little shoulder widening for some of the uh, roadway extensions, we'll do some of the roadway widening, which is not a problem, and coordinate for uh, getting uh, mailboxes, which is not a problem either. So, um, just kinda wanted to see if you guys had any questions on this again. If not, I just need to get an approval for the chairman to sign this, so I can get this back over to DOT.
You got a list of the roads here for us, I see.
Yes, sir, it should be the last, the last page. It look like this.
Yeah, right.
Now, Trent, wha- what, you said you were doing, you're doing what to these roads now, you widening them?
Uh, no, there's only uh, one that's getting any any kind of widening. Um, there'll be Tiber Road, let's see, yeah, shoulder widening.
One of the.
Road and Shell Road, got Wells Road, Eland Road, and uh, Wells Cemetery Road, just a little bit of shoulder widening.
Okay.
But most everything is uh, striping and signs.
And these, uh, some of these are your roads, Commissioner Frazier?
They're all over the county.
They uh, right, but but Commissioner Gillis, uh, you're right. And and that's what I was gonna ask you, because I know uh, I did uh, receive a a copy of uh, from the city on some of their resurfacing projects. And some of these matched on there.
Yes.
Are are they still?
Happened is, they just need to go ahead and move forward with this, and then what DOT will do is.
Wait till they resurface and then?
Well, that's not gonna replace it. DOT will probably remove it off of the list. If it's got, if it's been resurfaced and has a uh, been striped, then they'll remove it from the list, cuz this isn't gonna get done to two thousand twenty-two.
Uh, you're talking about next year? Yeah, right.
This, this chair.
Yes, sir.
I may be out of, I know Bri- um, Shell Road is on this list.
Yes, sir.
We got an issue with Shell Road, and I don't wanna see us just thinking about striping, and then we have to come back and redo it.
Okay.
Apparently, when the city of Riceburg did some work on Shell Road, they cut it.
Okay.
And when they cut it, you probably need to go down there and take a look. The road is sinking, sinking in.
Really, already?
Yeah, on Shell Road. It might be half a mile down Shell Road off of Bertham Ferry.
Okay.
But I don't wanna see us put stripe on that road and then go back and have to cut it out, and so I I I forgot about that, but that's not that.
Well, we'll go ahead and look at that and see about getting something working on that.
You can walk on and see it. Like I say, and what they did, they did a cut like this about that wide. Cut was only that wide to put water to the other side of the road, but somehow or another it's.
Yeah.
And when you hit it with your car, now you'll know it.
Is is all of Shell Road in the city of Riceburg? Um, from Bertham Ferry back around to um, what's that?
It's in the county.
To Bertham.
It's in the county.
Shell Road is in the county?
In the county, but they do have that annex for service, water and uh, sewage.
Oh, the city of Riceburg provides water down there, okay.
I think what happens is, the city limits is three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet, right, you're right.
Ferry Road, and it crosses over, so the first three hundred feet, I believe, is in the city.
Okay.
And then where it ties back into Briar Bay Road, I think that is all county.
County.
Do you have any figures on what this costs?
Yes, sir. This is all DOT, I say.
Yeah, I understand, I and I understand the waiting on the DOT, but are there some of these things out here that, me personally? I mean, we passed the T-Splash and the sales tax, and then we getting money from the residents on them for taxes? And yeah, I don't mind waiting for it, but if we need to get it done, let's get it done out of, out of what we got, I mean, I don't see no need. If we get the money from the DOT later on, that's fine, but if we don't, but, I mean, the the issue that Commissioner Stevens is talking about. And some of these other roads, I mean, we've got two roads that Commissioner Gillis done, what, Melvin Lane and Turning Point. And, you know, a line is a line, and I don't care who paints it on there, if it's a DOT contractor, or if we got to hire the DOT contractor, me personally.
Right.
But I mean, the issue that needs to be done is, let's look at them and see what it costs per mile, and have them done. I just, that's, that's just me, if we, I I don't think we need to be sitting around waiting for the state. One day we'll be understanding, they ain't got no money, but guess what, we all out.
What allowed us to do that was to stretch our dollars.
Yes, sir.
I understand that, but we, are here, we gonna have to wait on it till two thousand twenty-two? When we could actually start on it this summer, couldn't we?
Oh, yeah, I totally agree, cuz like uh, Commissioner Walling, even if you look at it, I mean, the reason why they're they're looking at these particular areas because of of the accident count. Uh, so this is more of a safety thing, so.
Yeah, what they're doing is, they're they're using the safety numbers to justify some safety monies.
Right.
And and you know how they used to just give out safety money to us?
Right, safety, I mean.
We got some safety money, can we stripe some roads? You remember a couple of years ago, we had, year after year, we had some big striping contracts, it's cuz they were giving out some money. And then they chose not to offer us, because we've gotten it so many years. They offered to a couple of other people, and then now they're coming and doing it, and they're doing this as their own, so they're doing this themselves instead of giving us the money.
Okay, so uh, I guess I have a question for you with that. I see they have the top sixteen priority, I don't know if they did it by by the number, or uh, just like Commissioner Walden, I'm assuming the reason why he was asking about the the cost. So say for instance, if if Commissioner Stevens decides to to take care of Shell Road, that issue you have on Shell Road, and he gets every striping. Or myself with Piney and Eunice and and Glenn Bryant, will they, if if we do the striping, well, resurfacing and striping, will will they move some other projects on this list to offset it?
I can ask them.
If you can.
I can certainly ask them.
Okay.
Yeah, cuz I know.
Don't ask, we won't get.
You got a tight budget, like Commissioner Stevens, you wanna make sure that you maximize your dollars, so. Absolutely, absolutely, but but what I'm saying is, obviously, it's not the only sixteen that that are looked at throughout the county.
Yeah, they they look at a bunch.
County standpoint, if I say, okay, well, I can't wait till next year, I need to ta- take care of this now. Even even if it's not in my district, will it be allocated back towards Liberty County?
Because by, also by looking at this list, sixteen roads, I've got seven, I've got seven of the roads of them.
Trent, don't ask them, just just say it.
Well, I have a good relationship with Jeremy, the guy that's doing.
You, I I I'm assuming you did, so, right, just.
Uh, and so I can talk to Jeremy about what we can do.
Right, right.
I have a question, Trent, on the first one here, uh, Homestown Road now, um, is this from, let's say from State Road, Route thirty, that's eighty-four. Now, Homestown Road, um, as we know it today, stops at the three-way. So they're talking about, uh, and the old Homestown Road went all the way to one nineteen.
Right.
Which, I mean, part of it is dirt, so are they talking about all the way to the to the historical Homestown Road, which at the end of the pavement? Before you get into the to the uh, the timber company back there?
It is at the end of the pavement on the thirty-eight side.
But I'm talking about at at the three-way, or they going past the three-way to the pavement, all the way to the dirt road? See, I mean, the the original Homestown Road went all the way to one nineteen.
Yes, sir.
And it was paved all the way until you got to the um, to the property where the timber is, okay.
We we extended that road.
For for this one here, are they stopping at the three-way, which turns into Freddie Waltham?
They're going all the way to the end of the pavement, where it turns into Dirt Road, um, is where they're gonna stop.
That was my question, because that's not Homestown Road anymore, is what I'm saying.
I think they still may have it listed, I I I'll double check.
No, I mean, I'm not gonna stop them now, but I'm just, I just wanted to know, when I saw that.
My my thought was, from reading this list, that it was Homestown Road from thirty-eight to the end. They didn't say the end of the pavement, they said.
Thirty-eight to the dirt road.
Yes, sir.
The way it turns there, okay, that's that's fine.
And they do that by by how many accidents you've had on it?
Well.
I mean.
They have, but what they have to do is, they have to show the number of accidents, cuz they're using safety monies to do this.
Right, yeah.
So, they they look at it as areas that need it, or are gonna need it, and what kind of accident ratings, and then what they do is, they have a, I don't know if y'all have heard of Gears, it's a program called Gears, and I don't, it's an acronym for something, but all the police departments post where all the accidents were, and they pull information from Gears, which is your crash history of what's happened where. And they use that to justify using the safety money.
I know I've learned to appreciate striping on dark roads at night, when I was getting to be my age.
I agree, several of these need some stripes.
Really makes a difference, man. Speaking of of safety, uh, one ninety-six, more lighting.
One ninety-six, say one time, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this on one ninety-six going through Hinesville, since that's your boys.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I'll tell you, like, lighting is a a whole animal, or a whole beast in itself. So, but I will talk to them about it.
Or some crossing something, you know, it's just, one ninety-six is starting to.
So where where in particular are you thinking?
Pedestrians, um, anything for for pedestrian, especially for pedestrian, crossing or something.
And we will look at the, you'll look at the corridor from like Hardee's to uh, Parker's out of Airport Road? Yes.
It's gonna go all the way out. Okay, good deal. Right, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
That could fall, I mean, that that is part of what they examine is uh, visibility at night.
Right, right, I'm, cuz I could tell you now that visibility is not.
That's one reason we have so many, so many problems.
Right.
Commissioner Jones?
Um, I understand that there's uh, different criteria for picking the roads that we have. Um, is there any particular reason, I guess there is, but why Freeman Grove Road was not included in this? Uh, and the reason I ask, because Limerick is there, and most of the accidents, I guess I've witnessed, experienced, heard um, over the years, happens at the intersection, right there, at the intersection of Freeman Grove and Limerick. Um, basically seventeen people crossing over. Um, how could we leave off Freeman Grove, and we got Limerick? And most of the far as safety stuff happens at the intersection, and that involves both roads. And I would think that Freeman Grove would need to have the same consideration as Limerick Road, if we're doing this for safety.
Yes, sir, I agree. And um, if I'm not mistaken, I I didn't, I did not generate this list for them, so I just wanna make sure that that's clear. But um, we did have on one of our, I think we did Limerick Road too, but I'm, it's all fuzzy right now, but I know we did Freeman Grove Road in one of our recent striping programs. Cuz I had some people that drove over the white stop bar that we had to go back and fix. So, and it may be that they look back at some of our past striping projects and then said, okay, that was done X amount of years, we'll use a different one. I don't know the answer to that question, I'm speculating, but I can certainly uh, see if they wanna maybe add that to it.
Yeah, um, and like I said, far as my observation, and I guess you can see living right there, um, the same conditions that's on Limerick Road, and they're the same, I understand you say that there's been some recent work done, but it's still
Yes.
in disrepair, pretty much.
Yes, sir.
How time sensitive is this?
Well, we're a little bit, I mean, we've been kinda tossing this around a little longer than we should have on our side, we need to go ahead and get it back to them. So a little bit beyond, but they're moving forward, anticipating it.
So can we, can we approve this, Commissioner, with with your recommendations added to? To this?
To negotiate.
Yes.
Motion?
Yes, sir.
Subtle.
Second.
Second, all right, and for discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all right.
Mr. Long, you did have.
Duly noted, right, sir.
Thank you.
That's, that's something to think about, that we're only doing it after the crash happens. I mean, that's the only information we give, we're we're going by, because there's been an accident, a fatality, or whatever. And my only comments earlier, and I understand what you're saying, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect about stretching the dollar, but if there's roads out here that we see, and we've talked about them before, I mean, I've talked to Trent about, you know, what, did we have just a a yellow line down Melvin Lane, or whatever, what do we need to try to do to, uh, I mean, they're short distance? And they, I can tell you, uh, used to a short distance road, they didn't try to run it seventy mile an hour, but they're gonna try to ride just as fast as they can go on them.
We were talking about Limerick Road there, in Lake George, and people going sixty miles an hour in front of the fire station.
Well, I mean, I-
If you would like, at, at your pleasure, I mean, we could put together a, a list of what we can get, uh, input from you guys and the road department, of potential roads, and try to put together an estimate, and if you wanted to put together a striping package to put out, we could go ahead and put out a striping package and do that.
But there's some roads that you won't ever travel at night, Trent, that you personally will not travel at night.
That's right, that's why I won't.
But there is, about all of these roads in the county, there's a deputy travel on it. And that's the information that we ought to be getting from, from them and the fire departments.
Good idea.
We need to know, you know, where, where's this dangerous place at, um, and let's, uh, identify them, and let's, you know, do whatever we can to, to, um, put curb markers up, put white lines on the side, and, and whatever. That paint is not that expensive, I don't care what anybody says, and it's not gotta be all that high-powered plastic.
Now, we have been putting, uh, uh, high build paint, that has flakes in it, so it reflects good, but we have not been trying to do the thermoplastic, uh, which is a lot more expensive.
And we can go to Walmart and buy some.
There you go.
Just mix it in the painting.
You're getting too far from the bucket.
Okay, well you-
Recreation and park improvements.
Ready to go?
Yes, sir.
So, uh, the next one, recreation and park improvements for, uh, ADA. As you know, we've got the plans put together for, uh, several different parks, um, to do, uh, access to all the playground equipment. Uh, some things go to some of the batting cages, ball fields, uh, a couple places need a couple, there are handicap parking spots. There's pretty much concrete, um, package put together. Uh, we've got plans and specifications and bid documents that are ready to go to bid, uh, at your pleasure. Um, and it hits, I, I'll just tell you, we hit Gum Branch, we hit some Hillary Park. Um, we get James, a little bit of James Brown Park, not much there, Jesse Stevens Park, Miller Park. Some small things on Miller Park, because we have some bigger issues that we're gonna take care of there. Homestown Park, Briar Bay, and Jesse Stevens Park and Eve Park. So we've got little pieces of concrete, or handicap ramps, or little things we need to be, uh, ADA compliant at these facilities, uh, all ready to go. Now, uh, as far as that goes, we've got, uh, we've got it built in with plans for some of the sidewalk to go at Gil Park, which would be, to expand the walking trail, kinda go around where the proposed, uh, ball field would be. Uh, and do it such a manner so that we're not gonna lose any of the sidewalk when we do other improvements, as well as, uh, do a basketball court there at Gil Park. So, those are incorporated into one plan, because they're all similar work. You know, the, the concrete work for the sidewalks for Gil Park, concrete work for the sidewalks for the ADA, and concrete work for the basketball court. So we've got that rolled, recommending rolling that into one contract, to, uh, make it a little easier, and, you know, get fixed prices for that. Um, so, both projects rolled in together, should be about three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, the funding is available, if you break it down, uh, the ADA requirement's gonna be about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, and the Gil Park's gonna be about a hundred and forty-seven thousand. And that gets our, all of our improvements. We've seen some pretty good prices, uh, here lately, uh, we did a very similar project for the city of Savannah, uh, city of Hinesville, and, uh, the prices came in well under our budget, uh, surprisingly, and, and, you know, I'd like to get this one out there and see if I can't get some of those good prices again.
Alright, funds are available.
Yes, sir.
We talked about that at your, at your planning session a little bit, um, with Miller Park playground equipment that's been ordered, the Gil Park Phase Two and these ADA, it will exhaust that recreation side of funds at the current time, uh, until we can possibly generate more than the allocation. So, um, capital projects that would be applicable to improvements, Mr. Martin, would need to make, that have previously been funded through that fund, won't be available, we'll have to handle those through the general fund. Um, so all that to say, that would still leave though, that dedicated source, which I wanna come back to in a second, over the gymnasium. And I know y'all had some discussion out there too, but that would still leave an available balance to the end, uh, at about one point one million for the gymnasium, so it would not go into that money.
Alright, so this is information item?
Actually, actually, we're bringing it from your planning session, we indicated, you know, that we'd have the ADA improvements ready to go.
I didn't see the little stars by it, so.
No, sir, I didn't, cause I really didn't know what the board's preference was bringing it forward, but that was, it, it was a movement that way. Uh, if you wanna try to entertain that, along with the Gil Park improvements, which you remember, the money was moved over, um, from District Four. To do that project, so that is actually what's funding that project.
Okay.
Which one, the one forty-seven, or the total?
Yes, the one forty-seven.
Well now, how is this gonna affect, Jimmy, you out there?
Yeah.
How's this gonna affect you when you, uh, when you ball, I mean, some of these fields don't have ball that much activities? So you're gonna pretty much be saying, I wanna have it done in this order like this, or is, who's gonna make the decision on how do you want? You know, the planning, I mean, are you gonna go, let's do the Briar Bay end, and let's leave there and go to the Eve Park end, or we're gonna-
You're talking about as far as ADA, uh, improvements are concerned? Um, well, actually, we have not discussed that, um, but, uh, you know, we will obviously have to work with the contractor, and, uh, you know, try to set up a schedule so that we can work our, now that we will have pavilion rentals around that, uh, or the use of the parks.
But we, yeah, well, I know y'all probably haven't discussed it, but we've been talking about ADA for two years, so I-
Oh, yeah, yeah. And there's not-
We need to, we need to-
There's not really a priority list?
This would've been an excellent time to have done it, when we but, uh, I mean, the, I know that each commissioner's gonna have something in their district they wanna have done, so we're gonna need to decide, you know, where do we go, where do we start, and where do we wind up at, you, you know that-
I think that Trent and I could develop that list very quickly.
Well, well, the list, the list is done, the list is already done of what'll be done, so it'll be led as a package. And either in the package, when we let it, uh, we'll talk about staging in there, and ask them, it tell, we'll tell them what the staging schedule needs to be, much like we do around Jimmy's other events, like when we resurface track and everything, uh, and we'll look at the package and do that. I mean, I'm, I'm confident we can disrupt very little, because it's, they're, they're mostly sidewalk improvements. And, uh, if necessary, we'll flag those areas off or do whatever, but I don't think it'll shut any facility totally down, I, I'd have to look at the plans again. But the pla- the, the, it's already been made, there is a list, specific list, they're ready to go to bid.
And I think, I think what you were saying, Commissioner Walden, is which ones would be done first?
Right, yeah.
Order, and I don't know that we have that.
No, and, and I'm not, I'm not sure that's not something you don't wanna talk to the contractor about, uh, as part of the let package, to see how they would propose staging that, because of their mobilization, demobilization? I mean, obviously, when you get them going, you wanna keep them going, um, as you know, so, you know, I, I'd say, please put the trust in us to work that, we know, you know, we, 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 we won't disrupt the activity anymore, and it's gotta be, we'll work around it, we'll come up with a schedule for that.
Disrupting it's not, it's not disrupting now, but I'm just saying, you know, when they go to a place like, let's just say that it, when they start to say, we're gonna go right here in Hinesville, then it's gonna be three months before they get to go to Riceboro.
I, I would-
Yeah, I mean, you gonna have Hinesville as far as James Brown Park?
Yeah.
And Stafford Park?
Yeah, so I, I would think when we did them before, and you, and you correct me if I'm wrong, um, but th- that will be in their plan, they'll send us, of how they wanna do that through mobilization, uh, so it, it cuts down their cost. I mean, I, I'd like for them to offer that plan to us, for us to look at and approve.
We, we do require that they provide us a schedule, of where they're going and what they're doing.
Well, that, I don't want their schedule, I want it to be that it's the commissioner's schedule. I mean, these guys that's out there that's got them on the outside, and Jimmy, he's gonna have to run them, then that's what I'm saying, you know, I, I, it's like paving a road. We, we, we've got roads, what Melvin Park, I mean, Melvin Road was supposed to have been done eight months ago, or a year ago, and it was two years. So what I'm saying is, let's don't go by their schedule, let's say, if, I mean, Jimmy wants to have the park down at, you know, the soccer field's done, at James Brown Park done, and he says, but I don't wanna do these up here around the ball field till later, let's move back up here, I wanna make sure that we're, uh, you know, accommodating them, and then of course, you know, Commissioner Stevens is gonna have new work to go at Miller Park, and also, he's gonna have his work, his work in the, uh, at the Riceboro area, so um, you know, those, you know, let's just make sure that it's, if it's a bid, everybody's gonna have to need to know, and especially that man that's pouring the concrete, that this county is pretty wide, and he's gonna have a pretty good area to travel.
Yes.
And the concrete trucks is gonna have a little bit of problem getting in and out some places.
Well, one thing you, you do need to know is, we do have a countywide map that shows the location and proximity of each one. And as a matter of fact, after our title page, that's the very first page, so you see where they are. So nothing is hidden about how far apart they are. Um, and each site is gonna have, um, different amounts of work to take place at each site. So what we can do, is we can put in the contract, make sure that the contractor knows that, uh, we've got to schedule concrete pours at certain venues, X amount of days in advance, so that we can make sure that there's no, uh, conflict, as far as recreation department goes. That way, the contractor can say, okay, on this day, I need to pour, uh, concrete in Park A and B, because that's how many trucks of concrete I can get poured that day. And then he can make some decisions on where he's going, and you let him use his own means and methods to be able to construct the sidewalk improvements. Now, all of it will be done within one contract period. So it's not like we're trying to decide, we're gonna do this first, and then we're gonna wait a couple of months and do this, and then wait a couple of months and do this. And we're giving them a set period of time, and I think we set like a hundred and twenty days, so we gave them four months to do it. So it's not a super long period, but it's long enough that they can maneuver back and forth, um, to get this taken care of. And we do require that they have a schedule of when they're gonna be operating, and we provide that to us. And, you know, uh, we do a pretty good job trying to stay on top of the contractor, to make sure he's doing what he's supposed to be doing.
That, that way, that way, Commissioner Walden, when that schedule comes in, and we, and we'll talk to them in a pre, in a pre-bid, about the concerns too, is the other thing. So that we put their bid in, they know what's on y'all's mind and our mind, uh, but the only little thing that we'll tweak a little bit now, that outdoor pavilions have been affected, is that we will coordinate the rental of those and some of those things based on that schedule. So really having the schedule ahead of time will help us in the pavilion rental game, to lock, you know, to not conflict. We'll, we'll work on it.
Outlying, y'all, y'all heard it, so.
We're gonna-
There will, there will be interruptions. There will be interruptions, like there are in any construction project.
Well, yeah.
To a normal schedule. So, we, I think we all know that.
I have some.
But we'll do our best to make sure that they are, are mine.
So the total amount, three thirty-five for the, uh, Gil Park and the ADA improvements, got it right?
Yes, sir.
You don't tell friends, am I tracking?
Yes, sir.
Alright, alright. Commissioner Jones, you need any other explanations about Gil Park?
No.
That'll be good, alright, okay, alright. Well, the gentleman has said, and, and it's been said that the funds are available. Y'all know Commissioner Bowen's made some transaction before he left, so. Chair, ten, a motion this time to move forward with the, uh, Gil Park improve, Phase Two, and the ADA improvements for all of our parks. Now, would that wrap up all of our ADA? Okay. Commissioner Walden, it's been going on for a while.
Well, what we're trying to do is make sure as we build new stuff, then-
Right, yeah.
ADA stuff too.
But, but then also, you know, they, they could come back later and, and, and make some changes.
Yeah, you're right.
And then we-
Well, I mean, Jimmy brought up a very important point, that was, you know, you wanna have the ADA from the place, the handicap parking, it's gotta go to the bleachers, that's, you know, that where they can get a wheelchair there. That was the one thing that I was wanting to make sure that we all are aware of, that, you know, there's gonna be an area that might be finished, but they may have to drive somewhere else to do this particular park, you know, this, this thing like this, uh, but and Commissioner Bowen had said that he was gonna put some money to, uh, do, um, Gil Park, and, um-
He did.
He did.
Wanna make the motion, sir?
Yeah, I would, uh, like to make the motion to move forward with the ADA improvements.
And the Gil Park.
Yeah, Gil Park.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, several seconds. Y'all got one of them?
Yes, right here.
Alright, in further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, alright. Three thirty-five approximately, thank you, gentlemen.
Now, that was just for Gil Park, but how about the other ADA, Joey, do we need a motion on that?
No, sir, no, sir, that was for all of them. That, now, so, so what you did the motion on was to go with Phase Two Gil Park, and, which is the walking trail for Gil Park. Um, as part of that walking trail, we're gonna make sure, obviously, it's ADA accessible to some other portions there. And, uh, but that was all inclusive, that's all your parks.
Well, Miller Park is gonna have ADA and new-
Miller Park section that will only have ADA done to it right now, would be those sections that won't be impacted by the plan y'all approved.
Right.
Mi- mi- Miller Park is undergoing a whole new redo. And so there won't be any improvements made there that would conflict, if necessary, with the redo, at all. So the Miller Park project on its own, and that's the reason I wanna put that on here, is, is three hundred thousand dollars. Um, there was some discussion about that at the planning session too. There are, i- if, if you're reserving funds for the gymnasium redo at the other end, then there are no allocated funds to do the Miller Park project right now. Uh, what the commission had had some discussion about, was to see if people wanted to contribute to that project, to get it off the ground. It, it is not in, uh, Trent will have to help me, we got a layout, but I don't believe construction plans are ready for that project yet. Uh, but we would, we would move to do that if you wanted to, if the commission wanted to pull money to, to try to do that project.
So, and, let me just ask a question before Jimmy gets up here, in your Miller Park plan, and, and Commissioner Stevens had mentioned one time to me about the playground equipment and all, it, is all of that gonna stay in the same area, Jimmy?
It is, Commissioner Walden, uh-
And then that'll have to have ADA sidewalks to that area.
Which would be part of the Miller Park plan redo.
Okay, and that's it, that's in there then?
Yes.
That's in their contract there?
In, in the, in the Miller Park deal, not the ADA deal.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
So that's all one separate bid?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's all a separate, yes, sir.
There's too many that gonna bids going on up here at one time, I can tell you that right now.
Just bringing them, bringing to you what you ask, or what, what the board asks.
Somebody's we need to be, we already had them in, I believe it's second meeting and first meeting, but.
I didn't get to bring any bids up here for a long time, so I'm kinda-
You can call and bring a bid up here, it's not a problem anymore.
You hit the light switch. Sees the moment, Jimmy, sees the moment.
You hit the light switch?
So not necessarily asking for action, but, but I, again, I'm coming back from your planning meeting, and you said this is something you wanted to move forward with.
Did.
So, uh-
Commissioner Walden, the, the sentiment from that planning meeting was that Miller Park has been the agenda for so long.
So long.
Uh, and it, uh, you know, Commissioner Stevens has been gracious enough to even, uh, I remember he took a, a seat back to help Commissioner Bowens with, um, laying that, um, Gil Park.
Gil Park.
And, and as we sat around the table planning the other day, we said, you know what? To, to make this happen, you know, let's just, among ourselves as commissioners, chip in, you know, to help make Miller Park come to fruition, because uh, it's, it's been on the, the docket for so long, so that's, that's kinda why it's here.
So this is where we turned the lights off, so he can get it in our pockets.
Yeah, they, yeah, yeah.
No, if, if, if he'd just give me, uh, my money back from, from one of my roads.
And I'll be clear, transparent, Commissioner Gillett said at the planning meeting, he said, hey, I would love to help, but I'm, I'm pretty strapped, he said that at the meeting. Those of us who aren't strapped, and we should step in and make this a countywide, as versus a, you know, just a commissioner-
Big money grip right here.
This was the plan the board approved back in, wow, December, January, just before we brought the fire park, the fire plan to you, because we integrated this into them.
Point to where the, uh, pavilion will go at, Mr. Martin, uh, Joey?
He's got his glasses on, I don't know.
Joey Martin?
Alright.
And, you know, there was, there was another plan.
Right.
Where of, and it had it up here.
Which, and we said that would be a little unsafe.
We, after discussion, we felt like there would be some, some issue with being so close to the highway.
Right, mhm. Right, mhm.
Be making a better use of overall space in the park by moving it to that area.
And the restroom that's there now will go away? Right?
Well, that, that can be, it could be either way. You know, I, I'm a proponent of keeping that restroom, uh, and taking the top off of it and putting a more conventional roof on it. And as Commissioner Gillard noted, the restrooms are in pretty good shape, they could use some, probably some, some renovation as well. But, you know, that's a pretty viable facility for the softball portion of that park. We have the restrooms there now. Personally, I don't see a reason to take them away. Uh, to improve them to the point where they are worth keeping and, and have restrooms there, and also have restrooms for the back part of the park as well.
And, and, uh.
Now, your scoreboard, you, you, that's where your clock used to be at, you.
I'm not buying a scoreboard.
The press.
That's where your clock used to be at, right? You, you scoreboard thing?
Well, the, the, the building itself is not necessary to, for the scoreboard.
Okay.
It, it has no play with the scoreboard, it was designed to be that. But, you know, initially, when that building was built, there was no scoreboard on the field. We added the scoreboard later. The control comes to the rear of the screen of the backstop, so it's not connected to the building. And another issue with the building too, Commissioner Stevens, is that's where all the electrical controls for the lights and all are too.
Right.
That goes away, then we have to find a way to, you know, have a standalone control panel for the lights, which has never been very successful at our other parks.
Okay. Okay.
And this is, is there, you're adding a field?
No, it's the same field.
Okay.
Same softball field, I, you know, the, some of the, uh, master planners that came in and looked, they said you should tear it down and rebuild the whole thing. That'd be nice, but to me, that's not very feasible. I mean, we have a pretty good field there now, and, I mean, I agree that, uh, you know, if, if I was starting from scratch, I may not put it up front like that, but, um.
Is what it is.
It is what it is at this point, I agree.
Now, the, the little basketball goals. Pointing that to me, Jimmy?
Same as they are, Commissioner Walter.
Yeah.
Still here, the new playground here, which is where the old one was as well. The thing I really like about this design is that if we, if we have the funding, I hope we do, and we can establish this paved parking in this area, we service the basketball courts, the playground, and the new pavilion. We have structured traffic flow through the park rather than those that drive across here now. Another key feature of this plan is that there's fencing planned to go from, from along this edge here.
Up here from.
Okay, Highway eighty-four is the, put me on eighty-four right there.
Right there.
Okay, so we're not. And that dark line, is that a, is that with a circle in the back, what is that, drainage?
It's a circle, it's a drainage feature, Trent?
We do have a drainage system.
We have a lot of.
Oh, no, uh, that's the water line.
Are you talking about this line back here?
Which one, that one?
This circle right here? That's around, that's a cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Ain't no cul-de-sac down there on that thing.
It's gonna be one.
I said, there's a cul-de-sac down there?
It would be.
It will be.
It will be.
That, that, that's, that's part of the improvement, though.
We do have to, though, remember to break it up, because we have residents back here.
Yeah, there's a residence back on the left.
You don't remember me and you going in there, ain't no cul-de-sac in there.
It will be. I'm stationed down there, god, lame.
Will, will they be?
We're playing baseball this time.
Will they be parking along the, the front of the baseball court like we do now?
Yeah, that's, that's my question. For, for, by, by the baseball field, where, where's the park?
About a baseball field.
Off of eighty-four.
Okay, all right.
About how many, do you know about how many spots that is?
Just grass.
Uh, I think it's about twenty, uh, twenty, I reckon.
Okay, that's where we park at, that's where we go. I don't ever drive to the back.
So what you'll do, you'll go up, you'll go up that road, Joey and Jimmy, um, and it'll, it'll actually be a paved street all the way up through there, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then you'll not have any open ditches, you, you could actually park off of that if you needed to? So what's your width right there, Trent, what's, how wide is that?
Twenty-four feet asphalt.
Huh?
Twenty-two or twenty-four feet asphalt.
We're shifting the water to this side.
Yeah, well, I got curb and gutter set up, so I can pick up curb and gutter all the way down there. They will have road or curb and gutter, so if you could.
Where's that gonna drain to? Where, where is that gonna drain to?
Back here, you can get this back to the swamp.
He's gonna put water on today. You can't drain that back toward, and now, the way it comes to now there, it comes back out to eighty-four, don't it? Underwater, under the ground there? There's pipe all the way, all the way in there?
All of this pipe, can you see here?
I used to spin my hands a little bit freely.
I'm talking about down that road, on that, on that left-hand side. No, there's, there's underground pipe there.
There is some.
Yeah, all on that side right there.
All of this, see the that one? That's all existing pipe.
Yeah.
Right, and it's in the dirt, it's covered up.
It is. Yeah, that's.
Left side road's got open ditch.
Yeah, I know where, I know that is, but the right-hand side, so you're just asphalt over that pipe? It'll be.
The, the pipe will, the rig will basically stay where it is, and the pipe will stay where it is. We'll just have curb and gutter, you drive down the paved road, and if you want to.
Well, there ought to be plenty of parking there on that side then.
Right, curb and gutter.
The way he's talking, it ought, there ought to be, be plenty of.
There, there's plenty of extra grass parking. Yeah, you don't wanna do that one like you did right now. That's the reason we didn't save all this paved parking up here, you know, at some point, dollars kinda bounce out and.
Jimmy, you satisfied with it?
Uh, actually, Commissioner Walter and Esther, I kinda, me and Trent and I came up with that design, so, yeah.
And, and Commissioner Stevens is?
Yeah.
So how much money we looking for?
Well, I'm in the process of trying to get that, uh, number pulled back up, so Mr. Mann and I talked about that yesterday.
It's gonna be around three, uh, I, I, I'm, my rough guess, Trent, gonna be around three seventy-five.
Yeah, the, the origi, the original budget showed three fifty with the playground, now we pull the playground out.
Okay.
So, so that was the original, though, and, and that's a little overestimate. And we wanna make sure all the rig.
You pulling the playground out, what you mean?
Because y'all have already approved it.
Not yet, we will now.
Playground equipment, you're gonna approve it tonight?
Yeah.
Um, to go ahead and replace the equipment back here? It's gone out.
Well, who, where's Kim at with our paper to see how much money we got in there?
We've already, y'all already kinda approved to do that.
Huh?
Y'all approved to do that.
Well, let's do, what are we doing here then talking about it?
You approved the playground.
I know, but I'm saying, how much money do we need, you say in three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars?
That's gonna be close. So, so we're off track. So the Miller Park playground that y'all will approve tonight, and we got the bids on, is, is actually gonna be fifty-two, it was programmed to be fifty, the recommendation's gonna be fifty-two. Fifty-five, I'm sorry. Uh, and the Miller Park estimate not yet bid or designed, final design drawings, is estimated to be three hundred, probably gonna be a little more than that. We don't know. We need to put that type of, that's what we're looking for, do you want to? We're not trying to push you to do anything, but we're bringing it to you. Cause you asked us to, do you want us to go ahead and do construction drawings and put Miller Park out the bid?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I think, I think we, we discussed this.
Yeah, we did.
Already.
Yeah, and if Trent's too busy, because he looked to me like he's got way too many things on there, Joey, let's just get us somebody that can work with, and let's, let's, let's move forward on it.
Yeah, I think that'd be a.
I prefer him.
That, uh, that we move forward and we take whatever money Commissioner Frazier's got. Whatever I've got, I don't mind giving to you.
Jimmy, you ready for a motion on that?
Well, I, I, I really, I, I really think once they get the hard number.
Yeah, then we'll. Yeah, yeah, right, I mean, I, you know, at this point, it's, do you want us, yeah, do you want us to go ahead and put it out?
We'll agree, because since it's yes. So, okay, so.
Go ahead and green light the.
We're, we're, we'll be, we'll find the money.
So, so, well.
You can see how much money that I got in, in there now, that I can move over, Joey?
We will, we can do that.
You can look in there right now.
Oh, I, I can tell you how much you got.
Yeah, I can too.
I'm gonna tell you something about these dollars, they amaze me, how they can just be in the cigar box over here, and the ice box over here. I need to know how much money it is that I've got. And you don't have to announce it, cause I know we're a soon meeting, you can just write it down on a piece of paper. And I'll write it back on a piece of paper and tell you how much I'll give you.
Uh, right now, there's five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three ninety-seven.
In what?
Your district.
Your, your part.
I'd be willing to, to, uh, uh, for recreation, and that was something that I spent a lot of time with, with Jimmy, I'd be willing to put two hundred thousand dollars to that project.
What do I have, Mr. Brown?
Ninety-two thousand, five ninety-one, just not obligated.
If, in fact, we do that, then I want us to have a decent sign down there that's called Joseph Miller Park.
Right, yeah.
But, but again, again, if, if we can, and. And we'll note that, but probably we just need to go ahead out, get the construction drawn done, so go ahead and put it out the bid. And then we'll come back with a hard dollar, and then you can decide if it's reasonable and you wanna move forward, or.
Okay, yeah.
You can look for some.
And, and again, this is no reflection on anybody, but if it's, if it's something that needs to be done, and I know Commissioner Stevens has talked about it, and Jimmy's talked about it, and I've talked about it with him. Then let's get, I mean, I know Trent's got roads and strapping and grassing and sidewalks, let's put somebody on it and let's run with it. I mean, I, I don't, I don't want us to sit around here, uh, I'm, I may be too old to get to play on Miller Park.
Trent, what do you think?
You're, you're already at that point.
What do you think your timeline is to do construction drawings and put them out? Okay. Is that sufficient for the board, or do you wanna do anything different here?
I wouldn't.
And I heard.
Before you, before you put the bids out? Yeah, I, that, that's, I think that's fine, what, sixty days?
Mr. Martin said he's, he working with familiar companies, so.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's do it. But, now that's, that'll be, the dollar figure that I can put in there and still be able to do, I think the sidewalks that I wanna try to, and they're all gonna have to be all ADA too, in my district, so.
Yes, sir, in fact, that, that number does not include other revenues you'll keep on getting. That's, that's the money that's already there for you now, so yes, sir, you, you have some more.
All right.
So we'll proceed there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Where are we now, playground equipment?
We did. You gonna run with it? Are you, Jimmy gonna run with it?
I'll, I'll go with that, if that's okay with you, Mr. Brown. Uh, gentlemen, we, we, as you know, put out bids for the new playground at Miller Park. Mr. Mosley did a great job with that RFP and answering about a thousand questions that came from vendors on that deal. And, um, we, we got a total of eight bids on, on Miller Park playground. Uh, I think that Mr. Mosley and the RFP had, had, had mentioned a, a budget figure of around forty-five thousand dollars for that project, knowing that we were planning on spending fifty. However, when we got the bids and we scored them, it was, it was myself and, and Mr. Mosley and Samantha Abji that works in our office that did the scoring. Uh, the one from Domenica Game Time was the one that we felt like was by far and away the best playground for the money. It actually came to fifty-five thousand, six hundred and one dollars. And, and that was higher than, than some of the other bids, for example, uh, you know, a forty thousand dollar bid on option number two from Play South, which Play South is also an excellent company. However, um, we felt like the benefits of the, of the playground that was offered by Domenica Game Time for fifty-five thousand was, was the best option for the county. So it scored out with the highest score, and, um, so that's the, that's the, the bid that I recommend to you gentlemen tonight, is to go with the one from Domenica Game Time. And I would also add that Domenica Game Time has done numerous other playgrounds for us around the county, so has Play South as well, both of those, again, excellent companies. However, I think in this particular proposal, that Game Time has the better, the better proposal.
Where are they located at?
Um, they have, uh, they have an office in, in, in the Atlanta area, but I'm not sure where their home base is.
All right, Chair, ten motion?
You satisfied with them, right?
Yes, sir.
Chairman, I make a motion that we go with Domenica Game Time for the, uh, playground equipment at Miller Park.
Second.
Motion second, we approve the bid provided by Mr. Martin to us for the playground equipment at Miller Park, amount of fifty-five thousand, six hundred and one dollars, any further discussion?
You got the money in the, we, we have the money for that.
All right, all in favor? All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Before Mr. Martin go away, since he's still standing there, so I had a question for him earlier, if I made people admit it. In the minutes that we received, it was a thousand dollars per cut on the grass cutting contract?
Yes, sir.
How many fields was that involving? Was that like Miller Park, Briar Bay Park?
It is, is, all of our outlying parks, it's the entire park, not just the field, it's the entire park. Uh, all of them except Homestown, which is a very small, much smaller park, uh, Riceboro Youth Center, and, um, Eve Park. So, the number of actual sites, I believe, is, I think it's ten, I'm not sure.
Miller. Eve Park.
Gunbranch, Hillary, Briar Bay, Liberty County Community Complex, Jones Creek. Gil Park, Miller Park, Jesse Stevens. I believe that's it, I think there's eight.
Okay.
That's cutting everything from below the wall.
That's a lot of cutting.
That's a lot of, yeah, and, and they may do it.
That's what, twice, twice a?
Twice a month?
Well, we, we initially start off with it twice a month, but when we get into the, the grass growing months of June, July, and August, we go with three times a month.
So that contract is for what, like, just grass season only?
April through October.
October, okay.
But, you know, the grass had already jumped up, once the contract was established with him, we worked out an agreement for him to go ahead and do an initial cut. So he actually did one cut in March of this, this particular.
Yeah.
Contract.
Okay, all right, just, all right.
Thank Mr. Martin.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Chair, what you do, sir?
All, all the stuff tonight, actually.
Yeah, you, you did all right tonight. Uh, ambulances?
Yes, sir, we, uh, this is the latest ambulance that y'all authorized to put out, and there were, uh, four folks submitted responses to it. Uh, Custom Truck and Bodywork scored the highest, there were, uh, two evaluators, Mr. Mosley and Mr. Lambeth on that, the EMS director. Um, Custom Bodyworks is who we have used before, and they've been very reliable, produce what we want. And, um, turnout took the lowest price, even when we did the air ride suspension system, which is what was requested. So, uh, the recommendation from the group is to award to Custom Truck and Bodyworks at a one ninety-six, seven fifty-six, that's one unit.
Chair, you need a motion?
Ten motion.
Some movement, Chair.
Second.
Motion second, we approve the bids, uh, from Custom Truck and Bodywork of Woodbury, Georgia, one ninety-six, seven fifty-six, any further discussion?
Uh, the only thing I got to say about that is, Mr. Brown, Mr. Chairman, when will we actually hear from the house building with some of the concerns, because purchasing these trucks, and we can't hardly keep them on the road? I mean, uh, it's an issue that I have a serious problem with. I know we obligated to purchase them, but what are they doing to keep these trucks on the road at all times, and like I said, this is, this is for a later date, but I'm just bringing the issue up. Sometime, there's only three trucks on the road. And we have a mutual aid agreement with other counties. Other counties do not respond, but we respond to other counties for mutual aid. This is an issue that I think we, another issue that Liberty County needs to take a serious. This is an issue that I think, another issue that Liberty County needs to take a serious look at, y'all.
So, Commissioner Stevens, um, um, they are due to come before you, either your first meeting in April or your second meeting in April, to talk about the operational agreement between the Board of Commissioners and the hospital that really has never been in writing. And so, uh, you'll get a copy of that draft agreement, and they will be here, to answer your que- they'll be here before you in April.
Okay, alright.
Uh, Commissioner Stevens, you said to keep them on the road. Now, i- is that a, a staffing problem or a maintenance problem?
Seems more like a staffing problem.
So they, they just don't have enough people working down there?
They did one time.
Okay. Okay.
They're making some efforts to hire some more people, and, and I just would assure you that Commissioner Thrift, our liaison to the hospital authority, she's on it.
Okay.
It is a problem. Alright, did we vote?
Who did not, sir?
Well, all in favor?
Justin did too.
Motion present. Alright, Ms. Linda Martin, as you very well know, as I announced, she has, she has not retired from the Board of Elections, but she has retired from being chairperson. So they would need to have a new chairperson, uh, for that board, so.
Yeah, we are ready. We don't need the, uh.
I'm ready to.
We don't need that yagging coming from the other side.
Alright, sir.
Alright, alright, sir.
We are ready. Yeah, uh, the selection committee, uh, like to appoint Mr. John D. McCaw as the chairperson of the Liberty County Board of Elections.
Is that a motion, sir?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
Motion second, that we have Mr. John McCaw serve as the incoming chairman of the Board of Elections. Any further discussion?
I, I'd like to, just have a question. Now, um, Ms. Martin, um, and it's a seven-member board with a chairman, right?
I think it's seven.
And, and, um, and Ms. Martin stepped down, and I think I saw some email, Ms. Martin stepped down, and, um, and, but her desire was to stay.
As a board member.
As a board member, but if, um, if none of the existing board wanted to step over to her spot, then she'd have vacated and been out, right? I mean, if, if no one wanted to swap with her.
He was in the board replacement, was he?
Yeah, it's not, she'd up, yeah, she'll, I hear you.
She's giving up the chairman seat.
Chairmanship role.
Right.
And somebody that was on the board who was not chairman said, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll do it.
I understand what you're saying.
Yes.
Right, but I'm saying, but, but if, if, if no one said that, then she, she's out and we got a vacancy.
Right.
But, well, no, not really, 'cause, 'cause.
Not really?
Is you do the appointments, then you come back later and appoint each chairman, so, so she, if nobody would want to take it.
She's there on top of the place.
Interesting, because there really wouldn't be a vacancy on the board. It's just that nobody was willing to take a chairmanship appointment. So, that's, that's a great question, but it wouldn't have created a vacancy on the board.
No.
She wasn't appointed to the board as chairman.
No.
She was a board member that you chose out to be chairman, so you'd be right back where you started. You'd be trying to pick somebody to be chairman, you just didn't have anybody that wanted it.
Yeah.
So it'd be, it's kinda different, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hadn't thought about that.
I hadn't thought about it either.
Vice chair would've had to step in.
The vice chair would've temporarily had to take it.
Vice chair said opt out.
Yeah, but, but.
But, but the vice chair would've, would've remained vice chair?
Right, yeah.
Okay, and they, and we wouldn't have had a chair? Till y'all appointed.
Till we found somebody who would say, yes, I'll be the chair.
And the vice chair would've had.
Or you just said, whether you want, or you just said, whether you wanted or not, you're gonna be the chairman, because. None, none, none of that happened. I, I was just wondering, I, I thought if, if she said, I, I don't want it.
No.
But I want this, and then somebody would've had to say, I, I want, I want what you. Okay. She, she was originally just a board member, in fact, wasn't the chairman, as a matter of fact.
Right.
And then agreed to be the chairman, so you'd be back in the same position. I should.
I think, a- 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 actually, I, I think if I recall, during the time when she was appointed chairman, there wasn't no one else on the board who had met the certification to become chair.
Might, might be.
Remember that, though.
Okay.
Commissioner, all the people of the appointment. Alright, thank you, Mr. McCaw, he's very willing to serve.
Okay.
Meeting times?
Oh, again, something I bring back, that was your planning commission, uh, your planning meeting was, uh, there was some discussion about changing commission meeting times, uh, to either.
And/or dates.
And/or dates, uh, you're right, Commissioner Frazier, so just wanted to see what the board's desire on that was.
He just stepped out.
Well, I think he's left his stuff here, left his wallet here, so I'll take that. You know, when, when, when I saw this on here, and it being eight o'clock, I thought that we was trying to limit how long these meetings last. Uh, like, for an hour, and we'd have been home by now. But, um, I, I, I don't have a problem, um, you know, I'm, I make a point to try to make the meetings, so whether it's the, uh, first Tuesday and third Thursday, which is what they are now, um, the only thing I, that, what, what I like about that, I was just looking at the calendar, um, for next month, we have, you know, that, there's, I think, twice a year, sometimes three times a year, according to how the calendar falls. You have one this week and next week, so you have that, you have that freedom of two weeks. You know, I think if you look at the calendar, April first is on a, on a, um, Thursday, I believe. Yes, on a Thursday, so the meeting would be that, um, six.
And the thirteenth.
Then the, then the following, yeah, the following week it would be, so you have back-to-back weeks, and, and you have that, um, special time. But I, I, I don't have a problem with, um, what time they start or, or what day of the week, if you wanna make it uniform. You know, every, you know, first and third Tuesday, first, uh, second and fourth, wha- wha- whatever. I, I don't have a problem e- either way. Totally up to you guys. We, we work whichever y'all wanna do.
Can we look at a schedule? Do, do us a.
Of, uh.
Let's see how it looks. How it looks, yeah, 'cause I, you made me just.
Oh, you mean just leaving it first? Yeah, leaving it like it is?
Or if you did the first and third Tuesdays, let me see.
Oh, yeah, we can, sure.
Yeah.
And you, and, and if it's every two weeks, every nine, then you will still have that.
Yeah.
That, that, that two week.
Right, 'cause I'm, I'm looking, it, it would've still, it'd still be the same thing. Be the same thing.
Yeah.
We meet, we, either we would've m- meet on a sixth and a thirteenth, or the sixth and the fifteenth. There's no change.
It would be until next week, though. Yeah, but.
I, I, I just say.
Just whatever. Another thing y'all talked about was whether you just wanna leave them the same days and make them the same time, though, for, so, so y'all discuss that, it's totally up to y'all.
Yeah, I.
It's totally.
I, I would rather it be uniform.
It's whatever y'all want.
And, and especially, uh, there's also a, a lot of, uh, dates, especially on Thursdays in the community, that kinda, kinda bump heads with, with a lot of things from my, our standpoint, too. I, I know, like, prime example, I was supposed to be hosting the, uh, Business After Hours with the Chamber tonight. 'Cause I know a, a lot of Chamber events are on Thursdays, and I understand, you know, but I'm just. City council meetings on Thursday, so.
We'll chart, I'll, we'll, we'll do a, uh, little calendar, and it'll also show the other city and city meeting dates.
Okay.
So that, you know, so you can look at it, too.
Let's do that.
Okay.
We'll address it next, uh, can you get that to us?
Alright.
I'll have it, I'll have it at next meeting.
Okay, alright, alright. You know, I, but, but, but really, um, Commissioner Gill makes a good point. I, I would suggest that each of us, you know, try to, as much as we can, try to have all our questions answered that can be answered before the meeting, so we don't spend a lot of time on the floor, uh, drilling, Trent, or drilling, uh, LCPC, whoever it is, so, so if we can.
Yeah, I'm, I'm usually asleep this time of night.
So we can do that, have our questions answered before we get here, as much as we can.
Hard and fast as.
But, but listen, if the biddy started at five, you would've still had an hour.
Well, but, but, but a three-hour meeting is, is, uh.
Yeah.
Kinda kind of wears me down.
Yeah, it's a little long, no doubt about it. Anything else, Mr. Brown, for the good of order?
I don't mind, sir.
No? Commissioned everybody? All minds, hearts clear, say it, Chair? Alright.
You had mentioned earlier about Commissioner Thrift, you know, she'd lost actually two sisters.
Yeah.
Two sisters?
Two sisters.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, she's lost, um.
She lost Winifred, but.
Yeah, there's another one that died, uh, Sunday.
Oh, my goodness, no, I didn't know. Yeah, I did not know that.
Y'all got more room down there. There's this.
Chair, tell the motion to adjourn.
So.
Okay. Thank you.
Got more room. They got way more.